East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Great, thank you, Jason. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board work session for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Present.
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 Present. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today, we appreciate everyone's understanding that we had to start this work session at 1:00 PM instead of 11:00 AM as we had a press conference out in Montauk for the Montauk emergency dredging, which I'm sure we'll talk about in liaison reports. We open today's meeting with public portion. We ask you to please kindly keep your comments to three minutes. And then we have a number of topics, starting with the 2025 draft capital plan, and that's going to be presented by our town administrator, Becky Hansen. And then Deputy Supervisor Kate Rogers will be presenting the Wayne Scott traffic study proposals. And that's followed by the, our department heads giving a presentation. It's town infrastructure, 2024 accomplishments, and 2025 goals. And first up will be our Airport Director Jim Brungich, followed by our Town Maintenance Supervisor Steve O'Brien, then our Networks and Systems Coordinator Heath Liebman will talk about IT, and then our Town Personnel Officer Kathleen Rude will address human resources. Then we will have a special events fee discussion. I'm Tom, I believe you'll introduce it, and then we're going to hear from Amber, Amory Leprick, and Chelsea Winslow. That's followed by liaison reports, and then we have a few resolutions, because this is our last meeting of the month. Our next meeting isn't until March 4th. So let's start with public portion. I have a few folks that have already signed up, and the first up is Michael Wooton. Welcome, Michael.
Good afternoon. I was here to make some comments regarding the Wayne Scott.
You could just introduce yourself for the clerk can have reflected in the minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Wooton, spelled W-O-O-T-T-O-N. And I came here today to comment on the Wayne Scott crosswalk situation. I've been a resident since, in Wayne Scott, since August 1994, and have been living there full-time since 2006. I enjoy going to Beach Lane quite often. One of my life's pleasures to either run or bike to the Wayne Scott Beach. And I just saw this memo came across my desk regarding the Wayne Scott crosswalk. And I thought that crosswalks are primarily used for pedestrians. So when I go to Wayne Scott Beach back and forth all the time, I don't see a whole lot of pedestrians. We do have a traffic problem, especially in summertime, if people take the alternate route to evade, to avoid the Montauk Highway. But I don't see that many pedestrians. If the crosswalks are, be utilized to slow down traffic, that's a different story. I'm by no means a traffic expert, but I don't see the need for pedestrian crosswalks if there are no pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next up, Hersi Eginten. Welcome, Hersi.
Thank you. My name is Hersi Eginten. Last name is spelled E-G-G-I-N-T-O-N. I'm addressing the board for the first time as the Chair of the Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee, a subcommittee of the CAC, the Traffic Safety Subcommittee, composed of David and Stacy Brodsky and Pablo Spiller, who's a member of the CAC as Chair, have put together the recommendation that you will, that Councilwoman Rogers will present in a few minutes on traffic safety in Wayne Scott. It includes recommendations with regard to stop signs and pedestrian crosswalks. The effort is to calm the traffic in, on Main Street and Wayne Scott Stone Road, primarily in Wayne Scott. As Mr. Wooton said, these are drivers who are avoiding Montauk Highway and traveling at virtually the same speed, which is far over the speed limit. So we're recommending that, in the absence of other devices at our disposal, that we would recommend stop signs in conjunction with pedestrian crosswalks. At the intersection of Wayne Scott Main Street and Beach Lane, a crosswalk has been recommended, largely because there's a very active, and I think many of us have used the farm stand, Billy and Lisa's Farms, Babinski's Farm Stand, and people cross Wayne Scott Main Street regularly, you know, without the benefit of crosswalks. So thank you for your attention, and I look forward to your consideration on their recommendations.
Thank you, Hersi. Bill Babinski? Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, guys. Bill Babinski, I'm here also about the proposal for the Wayne Scott stop signs or traffic plan, as I call it. I wrote something, so I'll just try to read it, stay on task. Thank you to the Town Board for hearing my comments and concerns regarding the current proposal. I'm very concerned that this proposal is being brought about to be nothing more than an inconvenience or deterrent of people driving down Wayne Scott Main Street and Stone Road. I do not see anywhere in this plan, and when I say plan, I'm referring to the PowerPoint, so I thought that would have been done first, apologies, how to improve the flow of traffic, just simply a way to make it more of a burden. This burden affects no one more than the full-time locals like myself, who live and travel these roads, roads multiple times per day, all year long. It seems to me that stop signs are being used in a way that we're not truly intended for. This report makes mention of the volume and speed. I have not seen one piece of data that shows a lack of safety at these proposed intersections. A stop sign is meant to be used to assign right away at an intersection, not controlled speeding. I do not see the data showing exactly when it was taken. Was it every day? Was it only on the weekends? My biggest concern with this is that you're going to create a year-round burden to solve a part-time problem. The fact that there is more traffic out here in August does not need a study. That is not only true of Wayne Scott Main Street, but every road has more volume. Are we going to add a stop sign at every intersection in the town of East Hampton? You show data for August, and again, my point is, where's the data for the rest of the year? I go back to my point, you have not convinced me there's a full-time problem out here, year-round. You have in bold print increased volume throughout the day, all year. Where is that data? I left my house this morning, there wasn't a car on Main Street, other than myself. So, and more importantly, what is your goal? Is it five cars per day, per hour, 400 a day, or just certain homeowners' vehicles, certain landscaping companies, certain pool companies? Unfortunately, a lot of this traffic that the WCAC is complaining about counts on the summer months to be able to live here and make it. I am not sure landscapers or masons are managing hedge funds or selling real estate in the off months. Whether the WCAC want to realize it or not, their time is money, and making it more difficult to get around just hurts the people who are trying to make a living. And again, I have no, not seen any documentation that this is a safety issue, just more volume than the WCAC wants on these roads. On Slide 6, the Wayne Scott Main and Wayne Scott Hollow intersection, your first bullet point says, this is a school intersection where vehicles currently speed east and west. For the record, this is a 20 mile an hour per hour posted school zone. How much slower does the WCAC want people to go? If speed is in fact the issue here, clearly enforcement is a problem, not a lack of stop signs. Furthermore, I'm disappointed in the lack of concern for those in agriculture, which is something the town in the past has embraced. The town, in fact, made the largest CPS purchase in history to keep the rural and open space in the Wayne Scott Main Street corridor. Thankfully, the town has invested a lot of time and money into agriculture and to help keep open space alive in Wayne Scott. We had a meeting about the same exact intersection a few years ago, a few years ago, that was brought up by the WCAC at that time as well. And I explained to the Town Board at the time, and the Superintendent of Highways, Mr. Lynch, that Sandy Bridge, which is that culvert, is the only pinch point on the entire Wayne Scott Main Street. Whether, when you are moving equipment east and west on Main Street, cars need to be able to pull over, or the farm equipment needs to be able to pull over. When traffic is flowing, this is done. If you're at a stop sign, and there's no shoulder, which there is not there, there's no way to get over. So my point being is if I'm heading east, and there's, going back home to the farm, if there's cars stopped west, I cannot pass them. There's one car, I can let them go. If there's a line of traffic, there is nowhere to go. It becomes a pinch point and a bottleneck. As I said then, and will reiterate now, if it's such a big problem, enforcement cannot be obtained of the school zone, perhaps the town should widen the road there. Also, I want to make very clear point, as a member of the Wayne Scott School Board, none of these comments about safety of the families were brought up by the Wayne Scott School Board or brought to the School Board. In fact, for the record, the student drop-off and pickup is on Wayne Scott Hollow Road, again, in a 20 mile an hour posted school zone. The proposal of four crosswalks at that intersection somehow has lost me also. Why would you have people walk in the same, why not have people walk in the same pattern or the same, same crosswalks? I'm not sure if the data of the current use of the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk on Wayne Scott Main Street, they didn't have that in the thing. As a resident, I can see the logic of having a crosswalk from one sidewalk to another. That makes sense to me. But four, I'm lost on the, on the flow there. In reference to the Beach Lane, Main Street intersection, I'm not understanding the necessity of stopping westbound. You had stopped, you had just stopped at Sarah's Path, barely moved, and now stopping again. Heading eastbound, the majority of traffic is slowing down to make the left onto Sarah's Path. In terms of the crosswalk there, I think if you want to promote safe crossing from a sidewalk to Beach Lane, that's a great idea. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought vehicles must stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk. Therefore, the need for a stop sign seems like a mute point if pedestrian traffic is in fact your, your concern. So a stop sign heading south on Sarah's Path, I think is a great idea, and that dates back to the fact that the desire path was taken away when the house was built on the point of the intersection there of Stone Road and Sarah's Path. People used to cut right when the house was built, they firmed it up, and the, the intersection is south of where it normally flowed. If the CAC had simply brought this intersection up, I would have fully supported. However, they have made one mass proposal with the wrong motive. And the eastbound portion of that intersection, I just wanted to touch them all, on Sarah's Path will only create a backup to Main Street. My main problem with this proposal is the idea that the proposals are being implemented as a deterrent or inconvenience, as quoted by, there was a lady, Lori, in the 27 East article, that said, these stop signs may not solve the problem. Therefore, again, to my point, you're trying to solve a part-time problem, but in reality are implementing a year-round burden to the local people who have no choice but to use these roads. When you live on a dead-end road like Beach Lane, you have only one option. To all of us, this is not a cut-through. I'm also very concerned the proposal is being brought by the WCAC, which is a committee of people that were appointed by the town and therefore claimed to represent the entire hamlet of Wayne Scott. How can the board with no Wayne Scott representation appoint members and assure they have a full cross-representation of the hamlet they are serving? To illustrate my point briefly on this, the presentation makes mention of the Wayne Scott School. However, nor the town nor the WCAC never approached the school to see if these concerns were valid. Further to the point, the slide shows data in August, school is not in session in August. Also, the mention of the farm stand in the slide, WCAC is aware, so the WCAC is aware there are farms in Wayne Scott, but I'm not sure if they reached out to the farmers to ask their questions of these proposed changes, or even thought about the impacts it would have on the farming community. The East Hampton Town Board has an agricultural advisory committee that the WCAC could have reached out to. Also, the town has an ag overlay district, which I find interesting, that as a farmer, I need to reach out to supporting property owners when I want to do something on my own property. But when the WCAC wants to do something that impacts the agricultural community or transport of equipment through the corridor, they forget about us. Again, if it's pedestrians, I'm almost done. Pedestrians that are the concern, maybe sidewalks are needed. If it's a bicycle that are concerned, then maybe roads need to be widened, and if bike lanes created. If speed of vehicles is a concern, then enforcement's needed. If it's the volume, then maybe the town needs to take a better look at what clogged up the highway so much that the people cannot travel down roads. To me, stop signs do not solve any of these problems. I'll cut it off there, but thank you, guys. I just want to make it very clear that, like I said, it's, there's portions of that that are nice, but the proposal adds proposed en masse, is simply just a deterrent, and some of us have no choice. Thank you.
And I gave you latitude, because you are a school board member and a business owner that's affected by that corner.
I tried to read faster, but my wife told me, go slow.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Andy Babinski.
Hello, Supervisor and Town Board, and Ms. Brennan. I'm here in reference to the stop signs also.
Just need to say your name for the record.
Andy Babinski, B-A-B-I-N-S-K-I. In response to the Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Board request for stop signs, as a lifelong member of Wayne Scott, I think their plan is not well-thought-out. I believe they think stop signs will deter summer traffic from using the route they are considering, concerned with. They won't work. The plan is aimed at July and August traffic, but if implemented, would create an inconvenience for locals year-round. The last time I remember stop signs being installed was on Town Line Road North, Northbound. I think if the signs at the intersections of Hedges Lane and Passes Lane were removed, it would create less air pollution. The town would be better off to subsidize the Highway Department to widen and repave the road in conjunction with Sagaponic Village. The road is currently a disgrace. Stop signs by Wayne Scott School are totally ill-advised. School is not in session in July or August. Wayne Scott Main Street is too narrow at that point. Farm equipment and other wide loads could create an impossible flow of traffic. The current speed limit by the school is 20 miles per hour. To put that in perspective, East End Main Street is 25 miles per hour, and no stop signs seems like overkill. A three-way stop at Wayne Scott Northwest Road and Wayne Scott Stone Road is totally unnecessary and counterproductive. Trucks of all sizes need to keep momentum to navigate their upcoming hill. For them to stop and start progressing wastes time and causes air pollution. A stop sign heading north on Sarah's Path makes absolutely no sense. Without a traffic sign, traffic is able to keep flowing. If the board decides to accept any of these suggestions, I would hope they speak with Chief Sarlo and find statistics that would back their plan up, and why it should be implemented. The current Town Board has recently approved $55 million of CPF funds to preserve the rural character of Wayne Scott. I don't believe that this thoughtless plan of stop signs helps back that purchase up. On a positive note, I totally agree with the stop sign placed at Town Line Road and Wayne Scott North, Wayne Scott North, Wayne Scott Main Street. In this case, it was a safety issue caused by a line-of-sight issue. A stop sign placed on Sarah's Path heading south and Wayne Scott Stone Road would probably be an asset. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andy. All right, so that's everyone that has signed up. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the board? Jason, is there anyone on the line?
Yes, we currently have four callers on the line. I will unmute the first.
Great, thank you.
Hello caller, ending 7570, you are on the air.
Good afternoon, my lovely supervisor, members of the Town Board. My name is Pablo Spiller. I'm a resident of Wayne Scott, and I'm going to talk about, just a couple of minutes, about the CAC recommendations. The, the, as this board is very well aware, traffic and speed has plagued Wayne Scott since the pandemic, with Wayne Scott Stone Road and Wayne Scott Main having become thoroughfares for traffic to and from the East End, with the consequence safety and quality of life indications for residents and visitors. Now, this is not only during the summer months, actually. Although traffic has come down substantially since the summer peaks, as a resident of that thoroughfare, I can attest that speed has becoming, has remained very high, particularly on Stone Road. As the presentation that Deputy Supervisor Rogers will provide to you, the, the speed in Stone Road, Wayne Scott Stone Road particularly, is way off the charts with, right now during the summer, in fact, there is a chart in the backup slides in page 14, a chart showing speed through June, July, and August for several years. And you can see that the, the traffic is way above the speed limit throughout, throughout that period of time. And as the presentation will show, that is the case from essentially 9:00 in the, in the morning through 7:00 PM. So it has become very difficult to navigate Wayne Scott Stone Road particularly during the, all the summer months. Now, in, in the January meeting of the Wayne Scott Citizen Advisory Board, there was, the, the WCAC voted to present to you these, these recommendations. These recommendations have been in the making for several months, with multiple meetings of the CAC, different set of, different set of, how do you call it, maps being presented in different meetings. So there was ample time for the Wayne Scott residents to present their opinions, and was in fact done. So the WCAC took into account a lot of input in the presentation that you are going to take today. I very much encourage you all to follow up, follow up on those recommendations with reasonable speed, so that both residents and visitors this year will be able to have a safer Wayne Scott in the coming months.
Thank you, Pablo. Thank you. Jason, if you could put the next caller through?
Absolutely. Hello caller, ending 2664, you are on the air. Hello?
Hi, thank you. My name is Chris Geggelys, it's spelled G-E-G-E-L-Y-S, Wayne Scott resident, and also calling about the stop sign proposal. I have not had a chance to look at all the intersections, but I do go to Beach Lane most days, and it seems to me that a stop sign at the intersection of Beach Lane and Main Street is entirely unnecessary, particularly when you're traveling westbound. As another caller pointed out, there's a stop sign at Sarah's Path and Main Street, just about a tenth of a mile away. I see no line-of-sight issues. I see no really opportunity to speed in any meaningful way. In addition, someone mentioned the farm stand, and I, I see more people driving there than walking there. I would think that stop signs would create another traffic problem. If people get backed up on both sides of the stop sign, trying to get it in and out of the farm stand would seem to me to be more of a problem than any crosswalk benefit that might be provided. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, I'm muting, yes. Hello caller, ending 3185, you're on the air. Hello?
Hello, my name is Mary Jose Hunter, and I live on Wayne Scott Stone Road. I've been there for, I'm a resident there, and I've been there for six years. And I just would like to say that I support the WCAC proposal, because I, you know, I can see the traffic, and I can see the traffic being important during most of the year, except in the winter. If it's not, if it's not the summer, it's all the, the gardeners and the workers that are going to fix up the, the, you know, the gardens and the houses before the season and after the season. So there is always a lot of traffic. And living there, I can tell that I, I am afraid actually to walk on the side of the road because of the speed of the cars and the trucks going up and down, up and down the street. There is no sideways on the side where I live, so I have to cross, wait. Coming out of my driveway is very difficult, again, because of the speed of the cars, and often the amount of cars that there are. And, you know, it is, it's not a, it's not a very joyful experience, walking to the beach and talking about the, the stop, the stop signs on, the new stop sign maybe on Sarah's Path. I think it's a great addition, because you never know when the cars are coming from Main Street down to the 27 using Wayne Scott's Road, whether they're going to be using Wayne Scott's Road, or whether they're going to go to Sarah's Path. So I think here, you need, you definitely need a pedestrian path or a stop sign to, to, to get, to, you know, to, to slow down the traffic, or to, you know, to make this, this, the cross from, from Stone Road onto the, the, onto the, 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 the walk, the walk path not dangerous. I feel, I feel this is a very dangerous area to walk on. And we, we're lots of houses living onto this, this street, and, and it is not, it's not a very pleasant experience to be driving with cars that are going so, so fast. So I welcome any possibility to slow down the traffic in the area, for sure. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Jason, if you could put the next caller through?
Absolutely. Hello caller, ending 0299. Oh, there you are. Hey, you're on the air.
Thank you. Good morning, good afternoon, Supervisor Bruce Gonzalez, members of the Town Board. This is Carolyn Logan Gluck, calling from Southern California, and I'd bring you greetings. Anyway, I wanted to comment on today's Wayne Scott Traffic Safety proposal, and first, thank you all for bringing this to work session. And Kate, I look forward to your presentation. I want to acknowledge the work of Pablo Spiller, who is a brand-new member to the Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee, as well as the work of Stacy and David Brodsky, who are models of concerned citizens, and have put in a tremendous effort into bringing this presentation together, as well as the work of Mary Jose Hunter, and my esteemed colleague on the CAC, Jose Arandia, who I know has worked closely with David Leese on also trying to bring this to fruition. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of Anthony Liberatore, past member of the CAC, who for years and years has served as liaison to the Police Department, and collected reams and reams of data that were taken from the electronic speed signs that are stationed on Wayne Scott Main Street, occasionally Town Line Road, Wayne Scott Stone Road, Wayne Scott Northwest Road, they rotate. And so while these electronic speed signs are not up all year round, they are up for a significant portion of the year, and the data they collect presumably is solid. I don't really want any stop signs or crosswalks. I'd much prefer to travel along the Wayne Scott roads, as I have, enjoying, moseying along and enjoying the beautiful rural environment. I don't want to really see more stop signs and crosswalks that would diminish this rural feel. But I feel that the fantasy of the quiet country road is no longer a reality, and something must be done. Enforcement to this point, which we have asked for multiple times, is not working. The proposal put before you might not be perfect, but I think everybody has acknowledged it has some merit. And so I'm happy if this ends up being a starting point for a discussion amongst the broader community. I would like to note that the Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee meetings are open to all. Agendas have always been sent to everybody who ever attended a meeting. They are posted at the post office in advance, as well as posted on the town's website. Every member of the Wayne Scott community and beyond has always been invited to come in and put in their two cents. The proposal put together today is based on those who are willing to offer their thoughts. The proposal, as I said, might not be perfect, but it has merit. I'm glad it's come to the work session, because if people aren't coming to the CAC meetings, at least they're showing up at the Wayne Scott, at the work sessions. And I hope that the comments that are given today will be taken under review, if only to improve a situation in which doing nothing should not be an option. Something needs to be done. Thank you very much for your attention and time.
Thank you, Carolyn. Jason, is there anyone else on the line?
All callers on the line have spoken. I'm just double-checking my notes. Yeah, we are all good.
Okay, I'm just going to ask one more time in the main meeting room. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Welcome, Peter. Thanks.
My name is Peter Dankowski. I'm a farmer in Wayne Scott.
I'm farmer in Wenscot. Putting all these stop signs on all these corners in that, in our hamlet over there, I don't think really makes a lot of sense because I travel those roads with wide farm equipment and, you know, truckloads of potatoes and whatnot that are heavy. And if you're stopping all the time and then trying to get that truck moving again to get down the road, it's not particularly easy, and you need a lot of room. And if, like in front of the stand over there, if you have a stop sign and say, I have to stop right there, next thing you know, I'm going to cause a traffic jam, somebody's going to run into the back of me, and if you keep traffic flowing, you don't really have the problems. You know, you're going to have a stop and go incident. I mean, just going through Sagaponac now and all those corners with stop signs is crazy. So I really don't think it's a great idea because all you're going to do is create a traffic jam. I think things are good the way they are. Normally, we do have the summer traffic. I mean, we've got to contend with it. We've got to contend with the people walking up and down the roads that don't know where they're going and the bicycles on Sunday morning, you know. So I really don't think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, so I am going to close out public portion, and we're going to move on to topics. Our first topic is the 2025 Draft Capital Plan, and I invite up our town administrator, Becky Hanson. Welcome, Becky.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisor, members of the town board. I am here to present the first draft of the 2025 Capital Plan. I'm sorry, Becky Hanson, town administrator and budget officer. So I'll just do a brief overview of what a capital plan is just for the benefit of the public and then go more into the plan itself. And we also have here today joining us a number of our department heads for the departments who have the largest proposed expenditures under the current plan. So the town of East Hampton annually adopts a three-year capital plan. A municipal capital plan is an outline of proposed capital projects for various purposes, including but not limited to physical betterments or improvements, new construction, reconstruction or upgrades of municipal facilities, the acquisition of vehicles, apparatus or equipment for use by municipal employees, the acquisition of land and preliminary studies or surveys that may result in any capital improvement. The plan itself also includes not only the proposed projects, but how those projects are going to be funded. Funding sources include debt service, the appropriation of capital reserve funds, the appropriation of operating funds, the appropriation of unassigned fund balance, grants, or a combination of any of those. As you can see in this year's plan and as previous plans, the town does propose to use an amount of unassigned fund balance. The town believes that due to its sound and strong fiscal practices, there are healthy fund balances in the whole town, part town, highway and sanitation funds. The plan, the narrative that accompanies the plan highlights the fund balances that were audited at the end of the 2023 fiscal year. There is a chart contained within the narrative that's proposing a very conservative amount of appropriation of unassigned fund balance for the 2025 Capital Plan. Out of the total unassigned fund balance of just over $51 million, $51.6 million, the plan is proposing to use just over 1.2 million or about 2.4% of unassigned fund balance. When the town issues its debt service, we take great strides to actually limit the amount from one year to the next. In its 2024 AAA rating, Moody's stated that the town's conservative budgeting and sound fiscal management have led the town to maintain very stable reserves and liquidity. In 2023, the town sought a rating for short-term financing or bond anticipation notes, and we were issued a MiG-1 rating, which is the highest rating any municipality can receive for short-term borrowing. Due to these factors, the town is considered a highly competitive client and recent years has received the highest number of bids that we have received in preceding years during our annual debt sale. The Moody's ratings combined with the town's fiscal management are essential so that the town can continue to obtain the lowest interest rates possible, which saves taxpayer monies over the course of the debt service that's been issued. The town is optimistic that the 2025 annual debt sale this August will be as successful in prior years. The current proposed 2025 Capital Plan is a combination of annual requests from some departments and a lot of new projects. The plan currently proposes a total of 104 projects compared to the adopted 24 plan, which was 87 projects. The total plan is proposed to cost $12,679,400. This is a $6.2 million decrease. We don't hear that a lot. That's a $6.2 million decrease from the 2024 Capital Plan. The 2025 Plan proposes to issue just over $10.6 million in new debt, which is $601,000 less than what we are retiring or the town is paying off during 2025. This is $686,000 less in total new debt issued under last year's plan. The plan does include conservative appropriation of unassigned fund balance and grant opportunities to offset our long-term debt. In addition, there's the availability of over $230,000 in unspent bond proceeds from a project that was issued by the town in 2002. The town has paid off that debt, so there's a remaining of, again, unspent bond proceeds, which we advise by bond counsel, you can reappropriate or reallocate to any lawful capital project. The plan currently does not recommend the use of any dedicated capital reserve funds. The main reason is that there are many building and infrastructure projects outlined for 2025, which in reality, we don't know what the ultimate cost is going to be until we go to bid. So the thought is that in anticipation that if a bid does come back and we do have to make up a difference somewhere, that if it's within reason, instead of issuing an additional long-term debt, that the town could access some of the capital reserve fund money that you have in any of your four major funds. Overall, the plan takes a conservative approach. There are several annual requests, again, as we've mentioned, for a lot of things like mainly vehicles and upgrades to software. But this year, the plan includes a new recommended annual maintenance allocation for the town hall building. Annual highway department requests include drainage, sidewalk replacements and road reconstruction. For many other departments, the plan seeks to replace its aging fleet. Again, those are just some of our annual requests. And as far as building maintenance and upgrades are concerned, we now have annual recommended appropriations for ADA improvements to town facilities, HVAC, roof and window replacements, and again, more specifically for upgrades and reconstruction to the town hall building itself. Also here at the town hall campus, we do have two proposed new projects. That includes the renovation of the Peach House, which is just outside the meeting room here, which will be a complete renovation and reconstruction that we anticipate that we'll use for additional town offices. As many of us working here now and across the town, our space is very limited as we seek to hire more employees. In addition, we will demolish and reconstruct the brick terrace on the east side of the building, which we have found is contributing to leaks within the building itself. So the entire outside brick patio area has to come down and be completely rebuilt. There's also a recommendation to renovate office suites located at 300 Panagop Place for Natural Resources, IT and the Planning Department. The plan also proposes window and flooring replacements at the Lamb Building, which is where the Housing Department is currently housed, in addition to the town trustees. The plan is also proposing to fund the renovation of the West Lake Pier, which is a project that started in 2024. And funding has also been proposed for design and engineering for replacement of the Sammy's Beach Bulkhead and the pier located at Rod's Valley Park. The plan also supports the creation and expansion of several recreational facilities within the town, more specifically parks located at Abraham's Path and the Terry King Ball Field, the Montauk Gate Park, the creation of additional pickleball courts and opportunities for town residents, and also at the Lieutenant Lee Hayes Park in Amagansett. Again, as I mentioned, we do have a number of department heads here who will come up and talk specifically about some of their other requests. But there's just one thing I do want to mention that we're watching closely is that we've been told that there is currently a federally proposed plan that would eliminate the tax-exempt status for bonds that have currently been issued by local governments.
Could you just repeat that?
Sure. There is a proposal right now that will eliminate the tax-exempt status for municipally issued bonds, which is a huge concern for us financially, according to our financial experts that we work closely with when we are issuing our debt, that that could potentially increase our costs by 30 to 35%. And right now, just on existing debt that we have, they're not entirely sure if this could apply to any new debt that's issued. But again, obviously, it's something that we're watching very, very closely. So I'll turn it over to some of our department heads who would like to come up and talk about the plans. Chief Sarlo?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Becky mentioned, you know, a number of the items in our capital plan are ongoing yearly improvements with our vehicle fleet, our computer hardware replacements to stay in compliance with our upgraded software so that all of our desktop terminals and vehicle terminals all can function with all of the new software upgrades. We are looking to, the biggest items on here is we're looking to build a storage building at town, at, in our impound yard up in Wenscot. This would be a home for several of our oversized vehicles, like our command post communications van and our emergency services van, and it would give us an indoor storage space for impounded vehicles as well. So we would be able to put a significant amount of our equipment that we are currently sort of running out of space for, that's sprinkled around different buildings through the town hall complex, and would give us one home right there at headquarters where we can keep, you know, some significant pieces of equipment that we have quite a bit of funds invested in already that we can keep them climate-controlled and have access to them right at headquarters. A couple of interesting notes on here, we have, we're looking for two mobile tower lights that we can put up at accident scenes or use during special events and things like that, that we can tow and use on either end of an accident scene or during a special event on a crowded area, roadways where we need to set up a crosswalk, things like that. The two tower lights that can be towed into place, raised up, and will illuminate a significant portion of roadway for safety would be a great thing that we would like to have moving forward. We have some upgrades to our command post van, which is now almost 10 years old, and it needs some technical upgrades. We need to upgrade the tower that raises off the top of it, some cameras, some lights, and just continue to keep that vehicle viable for us moving forward with modern technology. A number of things on here are just replacing, you know, doors for the, our police garage out back that are sort of falling apart. We'd like to upgrade, or there's a new technology with 2D holsters and lights on the weapon. We'd like to upgrade our entire departments. That's a, that's a safety and an upgraded training issue that has been on the forefront of many departments so that, God forbid, anytime an officer is tactically has to withdraw his weapon at night, he has a light built in onto the weapon right there, which you need upgraded holsters in order to be able to accommodate that. So the whole thing is an entire project for every uniform officer we have. We'd like to go, move to that. And, you know, a few other things that we've discussed in the past with keeping automated external defibrillators new and current and up to date, and having ballistic vests and some of the equipment for our emergency services team. That's the nuts and bolts of the basics. You know, some upgrades to our facilities, for our parking lot at headquarters, drainage, things like that, ceiling and striping. And any other questions about anything on here that rises, draws your concern or you'd like an explanation for?
Anyone have questions, Chief?
No, it's pretty repetitive for years, I've seen, and very fair and balanced the requests on there. I think, I know you were talking about the storage. That's something I think we do need to move on because out of security, I take the word, weatherproofing that equipment will prolong the effectiveness of that equipment where those costs are only inflating themselves then, too.
Right. So that's in for 2026, the $2 million for construct vehicle storage building on impound property? Does that need engineering?
The engineering, sorry. The engineering, the engineering was approved as part of the 2024 plan. So the engineering still needs to be completed, so there is funding there for that and then in anticipation of, for next year.
Great. Thank you.
And again, I appreciate the way this is done, that obviously through Becky's office allows us to be able to maintain our annual operating budget in a manageable fashion with, given the 2% tax cap and all the other expenditures that we have, being able to make some of these adjustments and improved purchases through the capital plan is extremely helpful, and we really wouldn't be able to function without it.
I agree with David. I think these are necessary improvements. And again, I also agree on the storage. It's time to have that. It's also good for emergency preparedness and resiliency as well, so it checks all the boxes.
Correct. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Also, Tim Treadwell, Marine Patrol.
Come on down, Tim. And thanks for joining us this morning.
Thanks for having me. Good afternoon. Most of my wish list is on here, and I appreciate that. I do have a couple, a couple concerns, though, is I have, I asked for two Marine Patrol vehicles, and it appears I have one in this year and one for next year. I really need those vehicles. My fleet is aging, and I have a large part-time staff, and I don't have enough vehicles sometimes to meet my operational needs on patrol. I do have some vehicles in the works that I were in last year's capital plan, but I don't have those yet. So it would be extremely helpful to have two in this year's plan.
Can I go back to that, didn't you, this summer, something like you had a couple vehicles that went offline?
Absolutely. There's, there's two out in the graveyard right now.
We call that the auction?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Surplus auction?
Right. The auction yard, yes, currently, yes. Also, the Marine Electronics Package, I know that this is a very expensive package here, we're upgrading Marine Electronics for Marine Two. I think the quote I had on there was more like 45 versus the 36 that's allocated. There's really only one game in town that does that, so I got a quote from them. Really what that does is, you know, we have operational electronics on there, but that allows us to interface with the Coast Guard more directly and helps us run search and rescue patterns as per the Coast Guard's direction. So it really is a, it really is a safety thing that would be excellent to be able to put on Marine Two. The new boat has that electronics already on Marine One, has that system. That's, that's the operational stuff. As far as infrastructure goes, the only thing that the board might want to consider is, is we have, you know, we've been looking at the Rod's Valley Pier replacement, but then recently in this, you know, last year, we noticed that the Sammy's Beach Bulkhead has gaps in it. I don't know if the Sammy's Beach Bulkhead might be a bigger priority, honestly, than the pier. It's really up to the board. I think if that, if that continues to deteriorate at its current rate, it could shoal up the inlet to Three Mile Harbor, in which case we'd have a situation like we have in Montauk right now, and might cause more problems. Whereas if we have to shut down the pier, that might not affect as many people as Three Mile Harbor inlet shoaling. So...
So right now, just so folks that are following along, Sammy's Beach, we've got $50,000 in this year for, for engineering design and 2.5 million in for 2026.
Correct.
And for Rod's Valley, the pier replacement, we've got $125,000 in for engineering for this year and 2.675 million for 2026.
Correct.
So are you saying that you would like to see the, the construction of Sammy's Beach happen in 2025?
Yes. Well, it's unknown. The big question mark is how, how the deterioration of that bulkhead will affect shoaling in the channel. It's, it's really an unknown, but, but, but it, but it seems to me that that would be more problematic than the current issue with the pier. Although the pier is, has deteriorated, we know that, that's why we want to replace that as well. But if I, if we, if we were choosing to do one or the other in this year's budget, I almost think that Sammy's Beach might want to be considered the priority. But that's up to the board.
Yeah, I mean, they're both in for construction in 2026, although, you know, when you're in '26 and '27, sometimes it's more of a placeholder that can get moved around.
So just something to keep in mind.
Okay. All right. Anything else you want to point out for us?
That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, just a couple of things. I think some of this was discussed in the Harbors and Docks and the Slips Committee also. So the western bulkhead of Sammy's Beach, right now, it's just deteriorating, so the sand's coming through, through there. That's not a federal maintained channel like Montauk. Plus, you know, the county comes and dredges that periodically on there. We might even want to get a survey of it to see how much sand might have been shoaled. But it is a critical... But it is a critical estuary that we have in the, in the iconic estuary to make sure water flows in there. And also that's where Marine Patrol comes out of then too. The Westlake Dock on there, repair right now, it's been damaged on the end. And the consideration there shows where the town board's been heading over the last eight years in repairing of our critical infrastructure for shoreside, shoreside, shoreside fisheries infrastructure. We initially did, I think about six years ago during, oh, maybe five years ago, five years ago during COVID, we did the Headed Harbor Bulkhead at 2.1. That amortizes over years because we get valuation back for their, last year or two years ago, we started on, on the Star Island Dock repair. We used ARPA funds for that, but that was originally placed into the capital funding. And the Westlake repair, which is a needed repair that's on there for our fisheries of the largest commercial fishing port in New York State. That's, that's on, on the plan. So that's why those numbers are there. And we hope that as we go out to bond on things, things be able to stabilize post-COVID too. So just to give you some of the ways that Tim and Ed Michaels prior to him have been putting these requests in incremental periods as this infrastructure has to deal a lot with the marine environment, which as we all know, going out here with the salts can deteriorate pretty quickly. I hope that explains a little bit more.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
We also have Steve Lynch, Town Highway Superintendent and Commissioner for Sanitation.
Welcome, Steve.
Hello. My name is Steve Lynch. I'm the Superintendent of Highways. How is everybody today?
You're good.
Well, a lot of this stuff is what we do every year, like snowplow replacement. As, as the older ones rot out, we're replacing them with new ones. And then we also retrofit trucks when we buy used equipment. Because we buy the used equipment to do the, the amount the salt is and stuff on because new trucks now are two, almost $260,000 and they put salt in the back of them. We do it with the older trucks. And then the used truck purchase, we're looking to buy two used trucks to retrofit the salting and plowing. The wheel loader they're going to do next year. The dump truck, that's for a triaxle dump truck. We had bought those ones from the military, but they're about spent out right now. We did get our money's worth out of them. That's been 13 years. So because now all our sweepings and stuff out of Montauk, we got to haul back the stamping. So it just makes it more efficient doing it at 20 yards at that time instead of 12. And it will come in, if we get storms, it's nice to have a bigger truck, the haul material also. Let's see. And, and that will also be a plow truck. The pavement management program that will track every road we have in town and show us the condition when we, you know, we can look at it anytime and know what condition the road is in, how it's graded. You know, the pavement is, and we can use that to help us with determining when we're paving, repaving roads and what we're going to do to. The, the skid steer attachment, that is a sickle bar that goes on the side and we use that on the sidewalks. I had for stuff that's hanging in, just drive down and just cuts all the vegetation. And we also use it on road shoulders when stuff starts growing and you just go right along with that and it cuts it. And then we go behind and pick it up and chip it. Let's see, drainage is we, every year, you know, we have a lot of failing drainage systems and we start with where we have the worst problems and then work to the best. And that's been going pretty good. We've been having some success with it and a lot of pipes, all the old pipes are failing, they're corrugated, metal pipes and they're all rotted out. So we've been doing a lot of pipe work. We just had a big project in Montauk replacing a bunch of pipes. So it's working out well. Road reconstruction, the 550, that's, we're behind on some of our major throughways. Like Old Northwest, there's a portion of Springs Fireplace Road going from Barnes's Store to like Underwood. That needs to be done and that, that will help us out to catch up a little bit on these main throughways.
Because that's a bump, what, 200,000 over the,
Yeah, that's a,
It's an additional 200,000 over what we've done in years past.
Yep. So it'll make a difference.
Yeah, I think that's an appropriate use.
Absolutely.
We're discussing.
Any questions on the highway?
No, Steve, I think we were saying as far as knowing investment of capital funding and specifically the supervisor was discussing, the more that we can continue to repair our roads, I think the more that the residents are going to see that. So that's why that, those lines were increased.
That's a, that's probably one of the largest town assets that the town has is the road system.
And the one taxpayers interact with day to day.
Yes. Everybody, you want to do sanitation while I'm up here?
Sure, please.
Yeah. Okay. The 40-yard containers, they would go on the floor where everybody throws their recyclables and regular trash. And they, they rot out, you know, from sitting, especially the glass ones. So every year we got to replace a few to stay up on them. And then the old roddy ones, we auction them off. The radiation detectors, right? It seems this year it's been the most we've ever had of radioactive material, right? Not that somebody's throwing something really bad. It's usually medical. It's when somebody goes and gets, you know, a nuclear stress test or something and the elderly and they're wearing diapers or something. And when it's tossed, it throws off the radiation detectors. Then we have to bring it, it goes, Winter Brothers takes it, then it gets stopped and then it has to come back and we have to locate it. And then when we find it, it has to sit until the radiation goes because it will dissipate after a while. And the last one, we just got cleared and we were able to get rid of it. So that's important. We, we don't want to spend the money on sending this stuff out. This way, when they drive through it, we'll set it off, we can locate it, put it to the side, report it. And, you know, so this way we're not paying twice to get rid of it. And it's a, a lot of money we need to.
Steve, just going down, will the detectors be at the entrance for vehicles coming in or for our carts leaving?
I want to have it, it's going to be at the entrance coming in because you got household garbage, which you could be in. And then another one by the scale. Right? Just so they can pick it up because it's coming in in commercial. This way, both people know that it's coming, they can stop it. The, the break room floor, you know, it's.
That's as useful.
Thirty seven years old.
Is that all? 37 years. Young.
It's time. Yep. So. The building, we're not sure on the cost. We put in a cost there, but that's going to determine on, you know, the engineering and bidding. But as you can see, the building's had, there's been a lot of wear and tear and, you know, so it's time to put it back together. So the best that we can. The pickup, that's the one that they have now, the frame is rusted. It's probably not going to pass the next inspection because the frame is rotted out. And so we're just replacing that and we'll auction off that pickup.
I saw that we moved the new trauma into 2026.
Oh, and for, that, that's what screens the compost. And the one that we have is 30 some years old and we're starting to have problems with it. So, you know, and we make good revenue on the compost. So we should replace it before the machine goes down or we miss a season.
So you're advocating for it to be moved to 2025?
Well, that would be nice. Because if the machine goes down.
I'm, I'm reading between the lines, Steve.
And it's probably, you know, 350, 400 grand.
Is there any, is there a resale value to the one that you currently have if it were to be replaced?
You will, if we go to replace it, we'll probably trade it. And because we won't get enough on the auction to make it worthwhile, we'll get better trade-in for that. Then we will auction it off.
So the 445 would include the trade-in value?
No. That's what the cost, that's before trade-in value. We'll see what they're going to give us for trading at the time.
It's how old?
It's like 30, 35 years old.
This is the, this capital plan is the year of the infrastructure and recreation. Okay.
So Steve, just, I mean, you and I have talked separately about sanitation department as a whole in the capital plan for improving the site in general because, you know, I'm, you know, and people are aware, you know, a lot of that, the buildings there, destruction needs replacing. It, it needs updating. I, I know we've had plans previously from engineers. You've been working and getting those updated, but is there any money we need to put into moving that forward for future years this year? Engineer, revising those engineering plans?
Well, then D and B, who was engineers that did it originally, and, you know, I was just staying with them because they can start from where they left off with and save us some money that we already paid. They're gonna, we're waiting for about a month and a half, two months now. I'm waiting for the estimate from them, you know, what it's cost to do the engineering.
So is that something we, we would need to put money into 2025 for if we're going to actually move this forward?
Yeah, because this, the last time it was a million, a million two, and it wasn't enough money. And that's, and Len goes, no.
I mean, I guess it's a question for the board, like if we are generally concerned about the condition of that facility and looking to invest in infrastructure, if this is something we want to invest in moving forward or we're okay with the current facilities as they stand for the immediate future?
I believe we should see what it's going to cost and then invest in it and do it all at one time.
Yeah, I would support going, looking at continuing the engineering aspect and updating the engineers.
Because I wouldn't want to, you know, shoot from my hip on what it's going to cost. I know what it was going to cost, you know, 10, 15, 10 years ago.
Maybe we could have your, that department do a work session to actually kind of re-present the plans to the board. You know, just so we know what it is we're looking to do there.
Well, I'm waiting, we're waiting on the engineering firm to get us this stuff.
That'd be great. Thanks, Steve.
I'm not an engineer. So I think we should wait for them and they'll come and give us a whole proposal. Anything else?
I don't have any questions.
Just to be clear, that engineering is funded in the works already? We're just waiting on it to come back?
No.
No.
We haven't even got a quote from them yet.
The only engineering that we have in sanitation in the recent years was for the new scale and also.
That was, that was McLean. And that's for the drainage.
Yep.
The drainage and doing the new scale.
And there's also the lean-to also, which is us.
For the construction debris, metal and tires.
And the salt barn.
And the salt, uh, salt barn was highway.
Salt barn, that was highway. And that's all done, that's complete.
And funding's in place for lean-to, correct? So that's done. Yeah.
All that funding.
So, so, so money for the engineering update is not in plan at this point?
No, not with D and B. We're waiting on them.
Okay.
Janie needs the paperwork from them and then she'll give it to the attorneys and then they'll.
Okay. So let's follow up with Janie and move that.
Okay.
That's it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
We also have John Rooney, who is head of the town's recreation department.
Great. Welcome, John. I hope you had a great vacation.
It was good. We had to come home early. We did deal with a family issues, but, but it was good. I was there. I left, it was 81 degrees and now it's freezing. I'll just go through briefly, these are not in any particular order than the order that, that Becky has listed and what I would assume that you guys also have in front of you. I'll just go through them. The items that, that include things with, you know, recreation boards and also some lifeguard needs as well. So the one at the top of the list was at Lion Soccer Field. Wanted to add a protective netting system on two sides of the field to help protect from folks losing their stuff into the thick it there. It's, it's pretty bad. If your ball goes in there, you're probably going to lose it. So we're looking to have a protective netting system around two sides of that field. We also need some new goals at Lion Soccer Field, the new, we need soccer, football goals that are both two and one. So we need to replace those. We have engineering and also engineering design eventual building for future years for possibly redoing the two volleyball courts at Stephen Hans Path and then adding a basketball court or moving the volleyball courts and having a basketball court added there as well. We also wanted to have a general line for resurfacing sport courts around the town. So whether it's a pickleball court, a tennis court, volleyball court, a basketball court. And so we have a general line that sometimes we got to fill cracks. We got to repaint lines. We have to mend the fences, you know, whatever needs to be done. So we wanted to have a general line that we could pull from to make those changes when they're needed in real time. Next one down is the Lieutenant Lee Hayes Youth Park Expansion. Town had purchased the property next door to the park a few years back. Would like to expand into that space and then reconfigure some of the existing things that are there. Not take anything away from the park. If we're doing anything, we'd be adding to it and expanding it, also expanding the building there, which would be needed for staff and also for indoor activities. That would be a pretty exciting project. That would add a pavilion, a shaded pavilion, walk areas, extra playground areas, maybe some inclusive playground elements. A multi-sport court and a new flat area for kids to skate in who are maybe like newer skaters and want to try out to do different tricks and not clog up the, the skate areas that are there now with the ramps and everything else. Next thing down is the lifeguards, purchase, we need to get a new side-by-side mule. One that we have now is 2017, needs to be replaced. We also have engineering design going forward for Stephen Hans Path to potentially add eight pickleball courts there. Pickleball is very popular, as you may know, and be, you know, another thing on, on the list. That'd be something that'd be a great improvement at a, at a greatly expanding location right now. We also have just various upgrades sometimes are needed and improvements are needed at different athletic fields. We wanted to have a, a line that would be available for that. Things can include fencing replacements, backstop reinforcements, maybe adding wind screens when needed at different locations. Next thing down is another thing for lifeguards, we need to upgrade our radios. So it was recommended to us. So we would need to do that. Our handhelds and some of our vehicle radios. Abraham's Path Basketball Courts, this is the basketball court that's where Terry King Ball Field is. And we need to, you know, redo that court, add new baskets there. So we'd like to just get that as good as it can be. So that would need to be rebuilt. The, yeah, next down, it's a small, it's hard to see. The, oh, Terry King Ball Field as well. So.
Borrow David's glasses?
Microscope with these things.
So at Terry King, whenever the men's league's there, the big tournament each summer, they have their decent hitters that like to pull the ball on the third base line, pull them into traffic.
Team, teams too.
Yeah. Everything that goes on, they, they get pulled into traffic and we, we should have some netting along that third base line to help protect the traffic and pedestrians walking along.
Almost like a tension netting that we have over at Little League fields at Stephen Hans Path?
Yeah, similar kind of thing.
Yeah. It's functional, but.
But it's, you know, it's just needed just to protect the roadway. Pickleball court construction, we currently did the engineering this year at Terry King and are looking to now build three pickleball courts at Terry King. As well on, just outside the, the field there in between the tennis volleyball courts, basketball court and the, and the softball field. And the last item also at, at Terry King was, as Chief Sarlo was mentioning, storage is, is a hard thing to come by and we would like to convert the, the old comfort station into a storage spot. We can have ball-filled equipment and everything that's needed to help, you know, have that. We can have ball-filled equipment and everything that's needed to help, you know, have that facility, whatever needs it there. And we can free up some space here and store things at that location. So that's our wish list for the next couple of years.
Questions or comments for?
No, I think those are all great. I'm supportive. Keep up the good work in that department.
Thanks.
I would agree too. You know, it is a great department. People are enjoying recreating. It's also, it goes back to the way that Becky and the supervisors are working with these capital plans in which by, by phasing in engineering to construction on there, it makes it more realistic for the deliverables right now, knowing you're not gonna be able to do both in the calendar year then too. It also shows that we want to add more, not take away something. I think we heard that once earlier then too. We want to add more pickleball courts at these locations, make things, make things safer on there for, for the, for the department. What I really like is the leaf, as my glasses came on and off there, the Lee Hayes Youth Park. That youth park opened, oh God, I was in elementary school and I think it was a square roller hockey rink that was in here. J.B. Verga was in there. And now it just gets used all the time. We had a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to buy the Gilbert property next door of it for recreational use. And now what we can do is conceptually design something for a greater amount of use, safe use for youth in the town of East Hampton and, and their families when they come to the park right now. So upgrading that facility, I think it's gonna be very well done. As far as some of the, the Terry King-
And that corridor is, you know, centrally located for-
Oh, yeah, exactly. Uh, major recreational facilities right next door. And then also the storage area there allows us to put some of our equipment there for the fields and those locations. And also, let's say if there was the snow in those locations, we could store equipment there also that would be harmonious with the properties next door for the center of modern aging too. So having a centralized storage location there for all of that, hopefully will work well, not just for parks and recreation, but also for buildings and grounds too.
I, I think adding, I, I think, as you said, with the goals of the capital projects being infrastructure and recreation, I'm, I'm glad that you, when you say we support youth, but it also supports families. Because every time we support one part of our population, the ripple effect is that the families get supported as well. And that's, goes whether it's seniors or youth or wherever programs that we're starting. So this, this capital plan really does concentrate on infrastructure and on families. So I think I'm, I'm supportive. So the, the question I just want to bring up, I think what we need to do is, is kind of circle back to our planning department though, because I, because, you know, there's, so now we've got Stephen Hans Path, which is the Fred W. Thiel Jr. recreational facility. We've got the Little League ball fields there. We're talking in twenty twenty-six, upgrading the basketball and volleyball and, and having the walking trails. We're, we're putting in a multipurpose field right now. We're replacing the one that's there. It's getting lights, you know. And now we're looking to put eight pickleball courts. I believe they're right perpendicular to the, the comfort station. Isn't that kind of where they're gonna be? We need to look at parking because we're putting a lot of recreational facilities, which is great to have them located in one place. But I think we need to revisit the parking because I do know on several occasions when I've been over there, I've had to park on Stephen Hans Path because it was thumping, you know, there was, and that's good.
That's a good problem.
It's a good problem to have, but I think it has to be visited because I think we really need to look at the parking over there because I think it's gonna need to get expanded.
So I, I agree with you, Madam Supervisor, so we'll continue to look in that as some, for engineering. There's, we have some conceptual plans for those locations, things we're gonna work with, the former CDCH building. But I agree with you that parking has to be in this next go-round, any new additions over there. So I'll continue to look and talk with John and planning and come back to you on that.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Steve O'Brien, the head of Buildings and Grounds and Parks.
Welcome, Steve.
Thanks for getting your crew out there to clean up a lot of those, you know, branches that came down over the weekend in those, in those- It was a wicked storm.
It was.
It was. Luckily, no major damage that we know of, so my pleasure. This year for capital projects for Buildings and Grounds, if we can, we can start there. We have a lot of, excuse me, town-wide improvements that we're looking to make. Things such as HVAC improvements to the existing town buildings for systems that have gone past their usable lifespan. This year so far, we've already spent about forty-five thousand dollars in new repairs and new boilers. It's a huge strain on my daily operating budget, so having a capital line would be a huge asset to us. The comfort stations, some of the existing comfort stations in town need upgrades, such as new roofing systems, new doorways, just an overall uplift of the facade and appearance. Some of the vehicle upgrades that we're looking to make are, we have a painter's van, which has gone past its usable lifespan. It has about ninety thousand miles on it. While that's not incredibly high, the age of the van is, I believe, ten years old.
Twelve.
Thank you. I don't have all the notes. There's too many notes to have everything in front of me. But the idea is to replace it before we have a major issue, which stops the workflow. The same with the electrician's vehicle, which I believe we're gonna put off into twenty twenty-six.
I, I, I moved it back into twenty twenty-five because I understand, does it have some kind of cherry picker kind of-
Yes, it's a grounded bucket truck-
Right.
Which is essential to street lighting, tree trimming, all sorts of different projects that we do. Without that vehicle, unfortunately, all those projects would cease.
Right, and we have an agreement right now with Seg Harbor to do their street lighting. And from what I understood, we would have had to have gone out for, uh-
To bid. We'd have to go out to bid if, if, if that vehicle was to break down, at least until it was repaired. We're also working with the safety coordinator for the town to look into some door hardening systems, including new locks, a central locking system, swipe card access to make all of the town buildings safer, as well as looking at doors and windows at various town buildings.
Right, with the door hardening, that goes, that covers three hundred pan ago?
Yes.
Right?
It's town-wide, so it would cover, yeah, a variety of buildings. We can go specifically what our priorities are. Happy to work with you on that. Some of the doors and windows, I know we have a separate project here for Town Hall, but there's also a project like Springs Library where the old windows are starting to rot and they need to be either historically reconditioned or replaced. The Montauk gazebo is one of the more specific projects, that and the playhouse security upgrades. The Montauk gazebo is a very highly-used area in the summer. The chamber uses it quite a bit for fundraising. The bones of that structure are starting to rot and pull apart and becoming a safety hazard. Throughout the years, my department has put Band-Aids on it, but it may be time that we look into getting some engineering done and replacing the structure altogether. It's a, a central part of that hamlet.
So, so right now for the Montauk, replace the Montauk gazebo, we have a hundred thousand dollars in for twenty twenty-six. Does that need engineering funds in twenty twenty-five?
We can hold off to twenty twenty-six if that's what the board advises. We, if we had the funds to start the project, I feel it would be in our best interest to get it the ground running and we can kind of start twenty twenty-six off with repair work if possible.
So would we, we better to go twenty-five for the engineering?
And then move money into-
Twenty-five seventy-five?
It could be engineering and construction? Because I don't know, I don't know what the, we haven't looked in the engineering, but maybe we can quickly see what we can get across on that.
I can reach out and get you folks a number, for sure. And moving on to the Parks Department, we are looking to do some additional improvements at the Terry King Ball Field in addition to what John Rooney had spoke of. We wanted to put in a cement bib behind home plate. And the, when it rains, it really floods out and it's high, you know, as you all know, a lot of usage there. We also need to purchase some new equipment, including things to maintain the new turf fields, like brooms to sweep the turf and redistribute the pellets, new snow blowing equipment if we're going to continue to handle downtown Montauk, as well as salting equipment and excavation equipment to help make our job a little bit easier. The excavator is a upgrade on the Bobcat. I see you have it listed here twice. I don't know if that's a mistake or if David, if our conversation had changed. We have currently a Bobcat loader, mini excavator, that we would like to upgrade to something with tracks that would be, enable us to do heavier loads, be more stable, and yet we could still utilize the existing attachments we have, including one that we discussed, which would be an excavating arm, making some of our projects much more efficient and less costly.
So I think what Steve was talking about is you, the, the department the last couple of years has been looking at multi, like a Swiss Army knife to be used, a Ventrack, which we could add on. Now we're doing snow removal with our Ventrack, beach stuff, mowing also, then the ball fields. We're slowly adding on to that because what happens, one person, one staff member or even two can do something that six were at the time, which leaves the other four staff members to do greater things than, within the, within the township. So it's just trying to work more efficiently with technology here and that would be able to, one of pieces, these, these equipments, you don't have to buy individual pieces anymore. You can buy a piece, add on attachments to have excavator arms and such. Successfully done within Buildings and Grounds and Parks, highway also, then two, to have these type of multi-tool setups within one. You buy the, you buy the base and then you add on the tools.
Exactly. For example, with our current Bobcat that we're looking to uptrade in an upgrade, we have a large auger that allows us to put in fence posts quicker than digging by hand. We have sweeping attachments for the Ventrack. We have fork attachments. We have graders that we use on our clay ball fields. We're also looking to, like I said, upgrade to a sweeper for the turf, snow blower and salt distribution to help make snow removal a little less strenuous. Luckily, not too bad so far.
Not good.
Yes. Any questions or comments? Anything I can elaborate on?
Yeah, just one or two things. I don't know if they fall in your department or not, but I assume this first one, Boyd. Montauk Playhouse, replacement of the generator there. I don't see that under your budget. It's something I, I would, I would personally like to see. That's again, I've said it before, it's one of the town's two emergency recognized shelters. Right now, I'm, I'm uncertain as to the capabilities to that generator, but I, I do think it's something we need to plan for in our budget. Second question would be, Amagant Sit, we're looking at the lighting project in the municipal parking lot. Do we need to put capitals for that, Becky, or is that gonna come out of a different funding source?
It depends on the cost. I mean, you can add it to the capital plan. It doesn't have to be part of the capital plan, but again-
Okay, okay. Those would be my, my two kind of main comments on this.
I think, and I'm, I'm just catching up to speed with the lighting project and Amagant Sit. But the generator would be something that we would need to have further discussions as to when we say the playhouse is an emergency center. What do we mean by that exactly? Is it going to be a heating center and a cooling center? Do we want the kitchen facilities to be operational? How much of the building do we want to have online in case of a major event? That would ultimately decide the generator size, location, and, but we can continue to explore that.
There's also grant funding for that, I think you mentioned.
Yeah, no, the grant funding is only for alternative energy source ones, so hydrogen one or something else. It wouldn't work on diesel. I, I had talked to this adjacent to fire department, you know, I, they have a diesel storage tank on, you know, adjacent to that facility. So should that be, make more sense to be on a diesel generator, I think. I think an alternative fuel source generator, it's relatively an unknown for people to operate. I mean, would your department have the capabilities to maintain something like that, like a hydrogen generator or no?
We don't have anyone with that skill set.
Delivery of it, Tom?
Yeah, so I think it's kind of a moot point to pursue the grants there, unfortunately.
Is there natural gas lines there?
I was just gonna ask that.
Not that I'm aware of. The entire-
That would be the most efficient.
Right, the entire playhouse is on number two heating oil.
Oh.
At least at the moment with some heat pumps. The one advantage to that is our storage capacity is significant. So unlike something like putting in a hydrogen tank where we, you know, we're limited by capacity and getting a delivery, you know, the number two oil, we, we can store quite a bit and run the generator for quite a while in case of a major event. There is no natural gas that I'm aware of. Don't know if it goes down that Flamingo Road, but it's something we can explore.
Steve, do you know?
There's, there's no natural gas.
I'm talking.
Okay.
I think so.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, I would just, maybe, maybe we follow up with Bruce Bates as well because it's, I mean, it's a Red Cross criteria to be that shelter. So they're the ones who'll determine what the requirements are in terms of heating, cooling and kitchen facilities.
Sure.
Yeah, I would just like to say, Steve, thank you and Becky too for adding the windows line. You know, one of the things I learned in my time here is that historic windows are very beautiful, but also expensive.
Yes.
And, and I think so much of what you're, you do with your department is, is maintain things to ultimately save money over the long run. And I think having that line so we can keep things, you know, in good condition will, is the right thing to do, and I appreciate your help on that.
Steve, I'm sorry, I do have one other thing, but I wrote it down correctly, my thing. And I'm not sure again if this is your department or not, but in Montauk, adjacent to Kirk Park, there is the historic little pier that goes off to a fishing pagoda on the water almost. It's in disrepair. We've closed off the access path to it.
Yes.
Is, that is your department. So that, that's something that I, I know local residents are very keen to see repaired and replaced. You know, are there plans to get that moving in, in the future?
There were plans several years ago. From my understanding, the engineering was done, everything was, but was set to be put in motion. But then it was stopped by the then department head for the planning department. There has been no further movement on it. At this point, it may be a larger problem than it, it's definitely a larger problem than it was. The pilings, I don't believe, are stable any longer. So it would have to be a multi-department project, including natural resources, planning. That whole structure would have to be removed and replaced and that would require some marine engineering, someone with a barge that can go out there, re-drive the pilings and then fabricate the, the similar structure on those pilings.
Do we need at least to consider at this point removing the existing structure? Because it is disintegrating into the water and that might in itself be having damaging effects on that area as well, so.
It's something we should discuss, for sure. The only, the only downside to removing it at the moment without a plan on how to replace it, maybe once you remove it, you may not be able to replace it.
Sure, sure. I think, yeah, we just need to make a decision one way or another, just, yeah.
How, how the board wants.
I think we need more information-
Yeah.
On, you know, what is the environmental impacts of taking things out as well, rather than just laying them?
Agreed, agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
No, Steve?
My pleasure.
So based on what we've heard today, you know, I will come back to the next work session on March fourth. Again, between this week, next week on what's come up, obviously some of the things that come up, you know, were not initial requests that we don't have funding proposals for or quotes. So we'll have to review and incorporate and how, see how to move that forward for another draft presentation on March fourth.
Yeah, so we should be having internal conversations over the next two weeks so we can get ready for the March fourth presentation.
Yeah, I mean, just, do you have any other one, just question, Annie, and can you brought my attention this morning to Brooks Park? We initially had two hundred and fifty in for this year and that's been pushed out to twenty-six. I do know there's some questions about the funding of that. I do think that, you know, just going through my discussions with that committee, you know, in order to preserve those buildings, that structure will need addressing in, in the nearer future, replacement of roof, etc. So whether we want to consider that go-forward, I mean, the only thing I would say about that generally for the capital budget as a whole, I, I think, yes, this is a infrastructure-focused budget. We've got good money being spent on restoration. There is not any capital investment in the arts, other than the Brooks Park kind of within here particularly. So, you know, given one of the seven, the seventh goal of the plan is to preserve the arts, that's something I would like to see us kind of take on in, in the next fiscal year.
So if we could just, maybe board members could just turn to the last page of the- So if we could just, maybe board members could just turn to the last page of the plan. And so what Becky shows here is that the total for 2025 is about 12.8 million. We're retiring 11.2. If you look at 2026, the total is 17.48 million is what the 26 capital budget shows, demonstrates. And the, the debt that we're retiring is 10.2 million. I mean, we, you have some difficult. We have difficult decisions to make in the coming years.
We do, and I, I listen, I think the elephant in the room in that sense is the senior center because we have it as a line item in here and we're saying it's for future discussions. Now, are we going to be looking to use capital funds for that construction? And I, we've mentioned this before, like, I think perhaps we need to have that as a work session of what is the financing plan for the senior center and how is that going to impact capital plans?
But we, we don't know, we can certainly have that conversation, but we don't know yet because we haven't gone out to bid for that, what that number is. Like typically with some of these projects, we're getting, as of right now, it's 28 million, right? But, you know, every year, it, you know, we, you know, we have to see what's happening too with what's going on in the world with potential tariffs moving forward. You know, this new thing that's going through the federal government where we could eliminate the tax exempt bond, which would be, you know, really hurt us. But I think what we need, you know, we need to do is we need to really hone in on this now that everybody has it and take a look. And, you know, what, do we need to do everything that's on these pages in 2025? We've had a couple of department heads ask for things to move from 26 to 25. We, you know, we just need to be prudent.
Yeah.
And also too, obviously, there is the recommendation for a number of initiatives through the police department for grants.
Exactly.
Because we're aware that there are a number of funding opportunities on the federal level. But obviously, that doesn't mean you're going to get them. So you're still incurring the debt.
Or that they still exist.
Correct.
If they're still going to exist, so you're still incurring that debt.
And what concerns me about the grant structure, when we're applying for grants, even if we are fortunate to win them, they're reimbursement grants, right? So we have to depend that the money that was set aside, when we spend it, will be given back to us by the federal government.
And depending on the type of grant, you can't always use grant money to pay back long-term debt you've issued on a project. It's either because you advanced from fund balance or you've only issued short-term financing for a project. So again, some of these larger projects, which are nine and a half times out of 10 reimbursable grants, you can't, you're not issuing long-term debt on it, you have to issue short-term debt on it.
And that's why it's essential to have these estimates before we put things into the budget or discuss them. Because even from last year, the, the idea of reciprocal grants, grants, the money being there has changed, even for the grants. So I, you know, it's very important to already, to have this nailed down before we bring it on to, onboard it to the plan.
That's, and just to add on to that, that's why we did a work session a couple of weeks ago about all the grant coordinator, our public relations officer, excuse me, our grants coordinator to, to assist on this. Because many other requests here, I think in almost every department that actually was just here, applies for grants and some are successful or not, even though you want to do it. It takes a couple of years, hence the Lee Hayes. We, we applied for a grant for that unsuccessfully. Now we have to bond it ourselves. But the first impetus of the town is to go look for grant funding that wouldn't go against our tax base then.
Yeah, Sam Klein, who is the town's grants analyst staff, has been sent a copy of this. This is basically her roadmap for the year and her directive and, and understanding the priorities of, you know, again, even just when it comes to some of the marine infrastructure that needs to be replaced. Sometimes this department of state or the EFC will have grant opportunities if something is part of your local revitalization waterfront plan or area. But again, until those announcements are made, which are not yet because the state hasn't even started its budget, you know, discussions yet, we don't know what type of funding is available.
And just learning curve on the grants for the coastal resiliency grant that we were awarded almost two years ago. We're still finishing up the contracts with the state.
Yeah.
So it's not, you know, you don't automatically get the check.
No.
But Steve, what did it take for to draw a drive? Took us 12 years to get that back? 10?
10 years?
Yeah.
Oh no, we just, yeah, we just got that back. 12 years.
Hey, there we go.
And it's like, nine years can be seen from a place to the rest.
So, okay. And if there's anything else that comes up between now and, and not this Friday, but the following Friday before the next draft is ready to go.
Beautiful. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming and explaining everything.
All right. So next up, we have the Wayne Scott Traffic Safety Proposals. And Deputy Supervisor Kate Rogers is going to take us through that. And we asked Steve Lynch and Chief Sarlo stay for that discussion. So Emery, if you could queue it up?
Yeah.
Thank you. Step away for a second. Emery, if you could just, when you get it up, just put it on the first page for a second. I just want to address some of the comments that were made today about the Wayne Scott CAC and this proposal. I think it's unfortunate when we get into these discussions, we're talking about traffic safety proposals, that it becomes any, anywhere in the discussion, you start to hear, you know, local people, working people versus this group versus that group. I, I think that's a very divisive way of looking at things. The people that are on the Wayne Scott CAC are members that have volunteered for the community to, to, for the betterment of the community. They put a lot of time and effort into it. They are residents of Wayne Scott. People down there are all neighbors. And I think that we're looking for some neighborhood safety changes here. People may or may not agree with them. I understand it, they may have concerns about them. But I, I do think it is very sad in these times that we're always seeking to divide by who belongs, who's really a local, who's this or who's working and who's not working and who has a right to be concerned. At these meetings, besides the Wayne Scott CAC members, it has been packed with neighbors in that neighborhood whenever traffic safety has been on the top, on the topic. And people are very concerned about the volume of traffic, the speed of traffic, their ability to walk down their roads and feel safe. And so I just wanted to preface the conversation that this is a conversation for everyone to participate in. There is no, we're the working people, you're not the working people, you are just people from the CAC. It's a very open group. The meetings are public meetings. They are well-attended beyond the members of the CAC, as I said, by, by people in the hamlet with all different concerns, from the airport to the gun club, to the, to, to many concerns. But the one that we do hear the most, since I've been the liaison for this, my second year now, is traffic safety on the very narrow lanes down south of the highway in Wayne Scott. So with that, the, there was a subcommittee that was started by the Wayne Scott CAC, I think it was even before I came on. And I know David has spent considerable time with folks looking at the proposals and making suggestions, et cetera. And then I know that these folks also met with all the town board members when they brought this proposal forward. So with that, I'll start on the first slide. And my mind is open on all of these proposals. And if more members of the public would like to speak to us, you can always email us, call us, speak at any public portion of any meeting. And I appreciate everybody that, that gives us input. So as we know, the current traffic patterns here and everywhere else in town have drastically increased since the pandemic. What they're experiencing in Wayne Scott is particularly on Wayne Scott Main Street and Wayne Scott Stone Road. The peak travel times are from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And there are no stop signs eastbound on Wayne Scott, Wayne Scott Main Street, Town Line intersection to Wayne Scott Stone Road and 27. So it's a pretty big loop of about 1.6 miles. And there's only one stop sign westbound, which is at Wayne Scott Stone Road and Sayers Path. The residents are concerned that this makes walking, biking, crossing streets and vehicles turning at intersections dangerous on those streets. And we have the data, next slide, Emery. The traffic has significantly increased in Wayne Scott, back in these back road areas on Wayne Scott Main Street and Wayne Scott Stone Road. One of the qualifying qualifiers down there is that it is the, the western beach access to town residents. So that's all town residents, particularly the folks in Wayne Scott. There's beach lane, that, that's the only town permitted parking area to access our oceanfront beaches until you get to Indian Wells.
Town, Town Lane, half of Town Lane.
A little bit of Town Lane, right. And I'm glad you brought up Town Lane because this, the idea of, of looking at the traffic now and thinking about some safety issues is to look at things preventively and proactively and not reactively, like the unfortunate situation that happened on Town Lane. And then stop signs were put in. So we're hoping to avoid that. So you can read through the data here, every year, there gets to be more traffic on these roads. People seek to bypass the Route 27. I can remember a million years ago when it was, I think Jerry Della Famina's daughter wrote a book that destroyed everybody's life that had where the back roads were. And now we have navigation systems. So usually the navigate, I don't know if you've used your navigation system, but it also pops up and says, hey, there's heavy traffic on this where we want an alternate route. So more and more and more and more traffic is, is getting onto these very narrow. And as we've heard people today talk about the narrowness of the streets down there, along with the qualifier of having a beach access parking lot and ocean access down Beach Lane. Next slide. So this is some of the data that was collected about the peak travel times. I think if you live here, you know this already. But this is data that's collected by the police department and also a private group that purchased one of those. Mike, what do you call them that tells you? Traffic monitoring devices. So there are two of those down there, correct?
One there, one time we both didn't.
So that's.
These are town devices or a private device?
One is, was, was donated.
Donated by the group.
But we control the data.
Yeah, but we control it.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're both. So we have a pretty good, good idea of the traffic flow. I did, there was a, one more slide that talked about traffic speed, but it was a slide that aggregated all the speeds together and just gave large data points at the end. And that was a little different than the data slides that were presented to us. The way we look at traffic speeding is whether it's zero to five miles an hour over the speed limit, five to 10, 10 to 20. This slide just put them all together and, and so I removed it. But however.
Just a quick question on this. Is this disproportionate to the traffic trends in the rest of the town?
I don't know the answer to that, Tom, but I'll say it's disproportionate to back road neighborhoods. So if you, if you don't live on a main road in the town. So I live off of Springs Fireplace Road. Springs Fireplace Road, I think it's a trillion cars a year. But I know that it's a main road, it's a county road, it's 40 miles an hour. But I live on a very quiet street, my, my own street that doesn't turn out onto any major roads. And there's, there's very little traffic on my street. So we're talking about roads that traditionally were not, were not highway roads or meant for large volumes of traffic. That just evolved that way because they happen to take you south of the highway. And you can cut through from Sagaponac, go straight up until you get to Wayne Scott Stone Road. Then you have to pop up back to the highway, which is why that road in particular is, is so heavily trafficked. So the combination of increased volume of traffic throughout the day all year and pedestrian use of neighborhood roadways, including to walk or bike to the public beach at Beach Lane, is a traffic safety issue. This proposal incorporates stop signs and crosswalks at four key intersections. And I just want folks to know that there were a lot more proposed, but after reviewing the proposal, these turned out to be the areas that were considered most dangerous. So one is at, and I don't know if I'm going to go in the right order here though, Emery. So one is for stop signs and crosswalks at Wayne Scott Main Street and Wayne Scott Hollow Road. You could just stay on this slide for a second. One is proposed for Wayne Scott Main Street and Beach Lane, one for Wayne Scott Stone Road and Sayers Path, and one for Wayne Scott Stone Road and Wayne Scott Northwest Road. And I'm going to show you those intersections. So this is the one that folks were talking about by the school. It's a little hard to see, but if you, if you look in your packet, you could see some of these stop signs are already existing. So let me see, there was a school intersection. And again, I don't think that the group went to the school, but I can tell you that a large number of parents attend these meetings who talk about, were concerned for their kids, both walking and biking. There is a school intersection where vehicles, they do, they have been noted as speeding east and west. The, the subcommittee believes this poses a risk to parents and children. The sidewalk adjacent to the school ends at the culvert and picks up diagonally across the street, creating a hazard crossing situation because of the diagonalness of, of where this sidewalk stops. And so the proposal is to install eastbound and westbound stop signs to just enhance safety for families entering or leaving the school and pedestrians. The culvert, the, why they look like this is that the culvert itself presents a challenge for crosswalk placement. And a potential solution is to extend the sidewalk adjacent to the school around the culvert to connect to a sidewalk across, across the street. So that, that culvert, that's under consideration. But right now, they'd see, like to see some additional stop signs. You could see where the proposed stop sign is and the proposed crosswalk. So it basically is a, from the sidewalk, let's say on the west side of Wayne Scott, Wayne Scott Main Street and, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. At Wayne Scott Hollow Road and Five Road Highway, they're proposing a crosswalk to cross the street and then a crosswalk and a stop sign to cross Five Road Hollow. So they would basically take two existing stop signs and, and add crosswalks and two more stop signs to that intersection. Next, maybe we'll come back to this one, Emery. Let's go to Sayers Path first because that's the more northerly. And one more. Let's go up Stone Road and start there and then we'll, we'll come back down Wayne Scott. So sorry, folks, if you could just go to slide nine. This is proposal for the, a lot of the problems with the intersections. And I know you fixed the one on Stephen Hans Path and Cedar Street? No, is that what it was? And that, that making that 90 degrees really made a big difference in sightlines for the cars. I know it did for me when I drive down there. So these are areas where you have people coming out of their neighborhoods. They're walking down to Beach Lane or they're just walking, their dogs are walking with their kids. And because the, the roads don't have that 90-degree turn, you have a lot of sightline issues. So there's an existing stop sign on Wayne Scott Northwest Road. There's a proposed then crosswalk across Wayne Scott Stone Road and a proposed stop sign. And also one above that intersection, just so if folks want to cross the road, they can walk down a little bit out of that odd line of sight and, and be visible to the cars and have crosswalks there that clearly show that these are areas where people can cross the street and then use the shoulder. Even though there is a stop sign on Wayne Scott Northwest Road, pedestrians, cyclists and cars turning onto Wayne Scott Stone Road have limited visibility, as I just expressed, on, from oncoming traffic down the Wayne Scott Stone Road hill. Nothing inhibits current excessive speeding. Again, I'm going to ask both the highway department and the chief, I don't know if stop signs are for speeding. But for me, they represent the ability to have safety in crossing these roads and using the soft shoulders. Wayne Scott Stone Road is a narrow street without sidewalks. And again, when you don't have the sidewalks, you want to make particularly sure that people have the ability to be seen by the cars when they're crossing roads. Installing stop signs and crosswalks at the Wayne Scott Stone roadside of the intersection will help reduce these risks. And now if we back up to Sayers Path, one slide. So we're on a slide. And now if we back up to Sayers Path, one slide, so we're on slide seven. So this is another intersection, I don't know if you're familiar with this one, but usually I'm coming down Wayne Scott Stone Road, and by the time I have a sightline on if a car is coming on Sayers Path, I'm halfway on Sayers Path. So it's a little bit of a peek-a-boo situation. Again, it's not a 90-degree angle, and it is really hard to see up Sayers Path. This intersection has limited visibility for eastbound traffic, making it particularly risky for pedestrians walking westbound. Installing stop signs for eastbound and southbound traffic on Sayers Path will enhance safety and help pedestrians navigate this intersection. Now, one of the important things here about this crosswalk, these two crosswalks, is that there is a sidewalk on the west side of Sayers Path that then people can connect to if they're walking and go around safely on Wayne Scott, Wayne Scott Main Street. So the idea to install the crosswalks is to just have better traffic safety for people that end up on that sidewalk, coming from either Sayers Path to the north or Wayne Scott Stone Road to the north. Extending the sidewalks on Sayers Path North to propose crosswalk and stop sign is another recommendation for the future, and it would encourage pedestrians to stop there. Now, if you just stay here for a second, Emery, when you get down to the end of Sayers, right there, that's the farm property that folks were speaking of when they made comments, that's an active farm stand area right there. And then there's also a left-hand turn that people don't realize that go into a private road neighborhood, but there is traffic down there as well. And then you're contending with, again, the diverted traffic from the highway. To go to the previous slide. And this is the last recommendation from the subcommittee. This is, again, Beach Lane is the narrow lane that takes folks down to the beach access for all town residents with permits. You can ride your bike there from anywhere. And also, for the folks that live in Wayne Scott, this is the closest beach access that they have as well with town parking. You can use it with town permits. So this is taking that sidewalk that we just saw at Sayers, going around Wayne Scott Main Street, and then the recommendation, there's a stop sign already that exists on Beach Lane for northbound traffic, I hope I'm getting these directions right. But the idea was to take folks across Beach Lane, giving some separation between the very active farm stand vehicles moving in and out of that unpaved parking lot, and people wanting to cross the street to then walk down Beach Lane. There's a wide shoulder on Beach Lane where people can park or people can walk down to Beach Lane. And those are basically the recommendations. The idea was to propose a little bit of separation from the vehicles entering and leaving this farm stand as well, and that's why this proposal evolved to push this stop sign and crosswalk west on Wayne Scott Main Street. That's what I, thank you, Emery. Questions?
I would say, I'd say comments on one, listen, I applaud what you're trying to do, and I think this is almost an impossible task. Truthfully, like, management of traffic flow in this town is so incredibly complex and, you know, there are public safety issues associated with it. There's also like the comprehensive plan, like, how does this actually fit with, you know, maintaining rural character, having stop signs across a major agricultural area? You know, I appreciate the residents in this specific neighborhood, you know, many of them, you know, want to reduce the traffic flow into their part of town because it takes away from their neighborhood character and their enjoyment of life. I find the same with traffic on my street. So, you know, how do you reduce the traffic here and what impacts does that have elsewhere? So what's this going to then do to traffic flowing 27, going west and east and, you know, impacts everybody else?
Well, even if you can't reduce the flow, you would want to make it a little safer for.
Right, so I guess to Chief, my first question would be to you, how many accidents have we had in the last 10 or 20 years in this geographic area?
So, I don't have all that data in front of me, but I know my lieutenant, who's a liaison to the Wayne Scott CAC, has brought some of that information forward in the past. Very few accidents. Not a lot of accidents in that whole corridor, in Sector 5, which is Wayne Scott, south of the highway in that area, there are very few traffic accidents. We have a volume problem there, there is absolutely no doubt. And we're very sensitive to the residents' concerns with trying to walk from their homes or pull out of their driveways to get to the beach. We completely understand that. We don't want to see any tragedy like happened over on the Town Line roadside of Southampton, and we're more than willing to work with you, the board, the highway department, everyone to try to come up with some solutions to try to make the area appear or feel safer. You know, unfortunately, right now, you know, some of the data that was extrapolated shows extremely high volumes, but not really a speed problem. And you have to look at speed data, the companies that create these devices look at speed basically within nine, seven to nine miles an hour over, of being in a compliance range. And our compliance reports actually show quite a bit of compliance within 10 miles an hour of the speed limit. The average speed on Wayne Scott Main Street for this July was 28 miles an hour. And the average speed on Wayne Scott Stone for this May was 34 miles an hour. So, I mean, you can see that obviously some cars speed, and I think more of what we see here is a high volume of vehicles going five to seven miles an hour over the speed limit together in chains of traffic during the high times during the summer season, which makes it very challenging to navigate those roadways, whether you're a cyclist or a pedestrian or you're trying to pull out of your driveway. So it's challenging and I also.
What I would ask is, you know, if you're a pedestrian, if you're on a bike and someone's going, you know, seven to 10 miles an hour on the speed limit, what we call compliance, I would imagine that would impact whatever, any injury that you would get from that vehicle.
Correct, but as I said, it's more of a perception issue for safety than it is an actual safety issue. I mean, we don't create those numbers with compliance. Those come from the National Traffic Safety Board, they come from the companies that work with the insurance companies to look at the speed data and come up with what compliance would look like. People don't drive 30 miles an hour all the time, every roadway.
I certainly know that.
So, you know, we have to be, the other issue I just want to make very clear though is that not a lot of accident data and no shoulders and no sidewalks through most of the area. So we have a challenge with a lot of people being in the travel lane or right on the white line on the fog line, which creates a difficult situation for safety in that area.
So Chief, you had said, because I wanted to write these numbers down. Wayne Scott Main Street, July, the average speed was?
28 miles an hour.
And then you said Wayne Scott Stone Road for May, the average?
And that's the high in the area that we have with a sampling over the last three to four years. May of 2021, Wayne Scott Main Street, the average was 30 in May. And in July of 2021, on Wayne Scott Stone, it was 32, average. So, you know, obviously you have handfuls of vehicles that are going 39, 40, 42, that creates an average. But to really dig into our data from our devices, you look at the compliance and the rates of compliance and how many vehicles fall within that range in certain times a day. The other thing is we spend a tremendous amount of time down there, sitting in a parked vehicle, trying to enforce, but we are as a deterrent. So when we sit on those long straight roadways, we're very visible and we deter people from speeding.
Yeah.
So we don't have a ton of ticket data, but we have a lot of time spent in the area monitoring the speed.
Yes, I think that the reason why folks are talking about the stop signs is I know what was said today about enforcement, but the Wayne Scott CAC totally appreciates the amount of visibility that you have down there and your department has down there, and the impact that that has while you're there. But of course, there's 70 miles of roads in the town, and it's unrealistic. We would need a policeman on every corner.
Yes. We're 70 square miles, we're over 200 miles a roadway.
Yeah.
And, you know, we do the best we can to get into those areas.
But they're very appreciative and always have been, that's why they, I mean, enforcement's not mentioned in this presentation.
The other piece I think we need to.
I think we're up to 300, or even more so.
I know we were over 200.
Yeah, it's a lot.
The other point I want to make too is we were at a presentation earlier in the fall this year regarding reducing speed limits, and I believe these two main roads were included in our request to try to lower to a 25 mile an hour speed limit.
So you're talking, you're focusing on speed, but my question is, if people have these strange, you know, not 90-degree angle intersections.
Correct.
And they are going to get from one side of the road to the other side of the road, for me.
Yep.
It's not about speeding. For me, it's about having a place where the traffic will see you, knows it has to stop.
Correct.
Especially with the volume, and you can cross safely.
Yeah.
That's really, for me, why I'm looking at this.
That's Sayers Path and Wayne Scott, a couple of those areas, and I know you've mentioned, you know, the highway department, Steve, have fixed Acabonic and Town Lane, there's a few of those that they've corrected. They've become much safer, people feel much more comfortable, it's much easier to navigate, the lines of sight are safer for everyone, and pedestrians can use those areas a little bit better. I'm totally supportive of looking into those. In my experience, I don't think lots of stop signs are efficient, and I don't think they actually help what we're addressing in the big picture. And I believe, you know, if there's been comments made about a lack of enforcement, well, now you're going to have people running stop signs when we're not there.
So are you saying none of these proposals, you don't support?
No, no, there's a handful, there's definitely a handful that I think you need to drill down a little bit more into, and I would defer to the highway superintendent, I think he probably sees one or two of those intersections that can be reconfigured that would create a better safety for both the vehicles and pedestrians. But I think we're also trying to fix some issues that I don't think all the stop signs are going to actually fix. And I think, you know, listening to the farmers in the area with trying to get their trucks through that corridor, all those stop signs and some of the turns are very challenging for them already. And, you know, the high volume is really focused into the summer months, but they are using those roadways year-round. And some of these proposals would be, there's really no need for some of them for eight months out, nine months out of the year. And I think that's, it's a little bit of overkill on the stop signs, and I don't like the idea of using multiple stop signs to slow down traffic as you go. People will start to figure out ways to time it, and I worry about pedestrians in those areas now with people trying to do the California slide and a stop sign and just go through it all the time. That's an issue that's concerning to me as well. We can't be there all the time to enforce it. You know, as much as we'd like to be, we're extremely busy, especially during the high peak travel times are actually our busiest times as well. When you look at, you know, five to seven or, you know, early morning during the summer months, that's when we're running call-to-call around town as well, answering police calls. So it's challenging to be there. I have some concerns, I think there's some very solid ideas and some good solutions in there. I would defer a little bit more to the engineers and to Steve Blunt and his experience with this. But I think lowering the speed limit will make people be able to navigate some of those narrow shoulders and roadways a little bit more safely, and a couple of those intersections being cleaned up will allow for a little bit safer passage. I do see much more bicycle traffic than foot traffic in there in the summer, and, you know, bicycle safety awareness continues to be key, that we try to get the message out as best we can, and we're going to continue to do public safety announcements. We have a lot of concerns about people's awareness and their understanding of the rules of the road when they're riding a bicycle.
And walking.
And walking. So, you know, riding with traffic, using hand signals, following the rules of the road, understanding when to cross, how to yield, those are things that are big problems that we see as ancillary in the summer months that not cause, but are contributing factors to a lot of the accidents that we respond to. So it's an educational piece and an awareness piece we need to continue to try to improve upon, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions before?
Just one from your perspective, it can be anecdotal if need be, but I mean, yeah, I think it's safe to say that the increases in traffic that we're seeing here is a trend, are pretty indicative across the town, would you?
Yes. This is a very high volume, obviously with the amount of people who.
Sure.
Both for the, you know, regular morning commute for work and for the summer visitors and the residents who come out on nights and weekends, this corridor is obviously very heavily traveled more than in the past. But yes, it's the similar type of increase we see in the cut-through roadways in the areas where people try to avoid a light or try to avoid the main, you know.
Right.
Avoid Amity and Main Street, you know, all those areas, the volume of traffic has exploded in the last 10 to 12 years, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
So then we really should be, you know, having some kind of reaction to that and taking another look at the patterns.
So, Mike, you mentioned the reducing the speed limits on Wayne Scott Main Street and Wayne Scott Stone Road. So we filed all the paperwork that we needed to file with Suffolk County, and I did get recognition from Charlie Bartha a few weeks back that it is gone to the state. So now it's with the state, so I can follow up with our.
That'd be great.
With our state representatives to see if we can get that moving.
Okay. And I do think that's something we need to observe, if we get that approved and it goes through, you know, I think we need to take some time to evaluate what impact that has and if that is a big piece of the calming of the traffic in the area, and see how these numbers look based off a reduced speed limit and how the pedestrians and cyclists feel they are able to navigate these areas with reduced speed as well.
Can I, Steve, have you looked at Wayne Scott Stone Road and Sayers Path? Is there a way to get that to be a 90-degree angle, the way you've done in a couple of other locations?
I think the Wayne Scott Stone and Sayers Path, the stop sign's in the wrong place. The stop sign should be on Sayers Path where it intersects with Wayne Scott Stone Road because of the way you enter. So if you had the stop sign on Sayers Path, it would eliminate that problem.
So that's a negative 45-degree angle street, which we see.
This way, they're stopping there.
Yeah.
Right, and it's a huge wide intersection.
Yeah.
Right, to make the, to cut that intersection down, I think we'd be better off to put the stop sign on Sayers Path.
Right.
So this way they have to stop at Sayers Path before they enter, and this way the through traffic would be Wayne Scott Stone Road to the stop sign where it intersects at Wayne Scott Main Street.
So have one stop sign there as opposed to the three?
But it's definitely, it should definitely be on Sayers Path, the stop sign.
So, but if you're coming down Wayne Scott Road, I can't see Sayers Path, right, until I'm in that lane mostly. So to know whether there's a car stop, will I be able to see the car stop there then?
So, because the line of sight is fine, but if you're gonna, if you come into a stop, it changes everything, depending on how you, because you're slowing down, now what you see as you're driving, how are you going to look over there? But if you're coming to a stop, right, there could be cars that you couldn't see that are coming. So if they have to stop there, it's going to make it much safer. And Wayne Scott Stone should be the through, you know, go to Wayne Scott Main Street. And that would change, make it a whole lot safer.
So I look at, so I did ride around with Jose Aranda, and when there was a large gamut of potential changes out there, I've done this with Chief and yourself, Steve and others in the past before, and a lot of the initial discussions came in about safety of the roadways by only putting two stop signs in an intersection instead of three, whereas more advised and such. Going from two to three stop sign intersections, we did the same thing down at Collins with the Village, it was much better with three. I thought two at the time, my fault, you are correct, it was better with three. Same thing went back to Jose, and I believe he went back to the CAC discussing some of these locations also. I also look into it as far as infrastructure. It is one of the only locations in town that we actually have sidewalks going on the north side of Main Street there, up to Sayers Path, but in so much ways it doesn't maybe go far enough down Main Street to the school, so you're connecting the schools on there. What I didn't really, there was two things that came up with some of the voices that were here today, Sandy Bridge, that is there, that culvert that is there, it'd be, you know, if that's a choke point, is that a location where we can look at that culvert to widen it? So a sidewalk could be extended on that way or the street a little bit, that's one question I'll answer now. The second one is, there are no fog lines. It's a small right away, it looks like 66-foot wide right away maybe, if that, and the streets, could we put eventually maybe another foot or two asphalt on each side of it if it came down to that, the widen for bicycle traffic on there? So, and I know down by the farm stand, there is another little culvert over by the farm stand also. So there's a couple of things infrastructure-wise, are those possibilities?
It's hard, you know, to just add a couple of feet to a road, what's going to happen? What's gonna happen is with the couple of feet that you add, that's gonna fall apart pretty quickly, deteriorate because it, it doesn't, the compaction of the ground is totally different than what's been ridden over for the last hundred years. So you look on, on Montauk Highway, you can tell where the shoulders are, the shoulders fall right apart. That's because they were done at different times and only a couple of feet. So it isn't, it, it's gonna, it's gonna settle and it is gonna fall apart. So that, which is gonna make it more dangerous because now you're gonna have a deteriorating shoulder and people trying to ride bicycles and stuff on it. Right? It's like Sag Harbor, did they put share roads in where you could put the symbols on the road that it's shared with bicycles and cars? And another way, so this way it's a visual thing with people, right? Because everything is, is a visual, you gotta see. And if they see him on the road, everybody looks at the road when you're driving, right? Signs they might miss and then you get so many signs, people don't even see them anymore because there's just so many. But maybe if we put some, did the share roads, that could be on Wayne Scott Stone and also on Wayne Scott Main Street, right? Because there is no sidewalk on, on Wayne Scott Stone Road and the bicycles aren't supposed to ride on the sidewalk anyway. So this way, if you did a share road, right, it's, it's in the people's minds, okay, there's gonna be bicycles here, we gotta look out for them. Lowering the speed limit, definitely, you know, is gonna make a difference, right? We already have the 20 mile an hour zone by the school. And we're also, we're looking at a program right now that I think we're gonna get and it will, at any time, it monitors the speed and volume traffic 24/7. So at any time, I could go and print a report, tell you how many cars for that time period and what the, what the speed was. And it will even give you the, the people that are speeding, you can track that, you can just do how many cars were speeding and it will give you the speeds that they were doing. You know? So this way, as we do things, we'll be able to go back and look and see, are we making it better? Is it, you know, things are getting better, it's a way to track it. Right now, you know, it's kind of hard, you know, to track it. This way we could track it all, you know, always, so.
So Steve, what about like, uh, for me, it's the intersection of Beach, the West Side, the intersection of Beach and Main. There's a sidewalk and, and it's the Beach access. What do you think about a crosswalk there?
You, you have a sidewalk on, on Wayne Scott Main.
Right.
Right? So you do a crosswalk from where, because you want to connect to the sidewalk on the other side of the road, right? Because I believe there's one on the South Side. No?
No. I don't believe there's one going down Beach Lane at all.
No, there's none on Beach Lane.
But my, my worry is just that people going down to Beach, at least, I, I'm hearing what you're saying about something on the street. So if there's a crosswalk there and people see the visualization that people may be crossing there, they'll just have an awareness that that could be a place where, you know, people are, are going across.
And if you're gonna add all these crosswalks, you want to bring, we, we've had incidences where we've been sued because people got hurt in some crosswalk. Right? One was just settled after many, many years. Uh, right? And there is an engineering thing and a study that's supposed to be done before you put the crosswalk in to avoid liability. Right? So you want to look into that too. Because if you just add it and then somebody gets hit in it.
So if somebody gets hit and it's not there, we're in the clear.
And then they sue the town. You know, we could be liable because we just put it in.
Yeah. Well, that's interesting. Better to not have it there so people just get it.
Because that happened at, uh, what was that, uh, Spring Harbor and.
Ants Creek.
Springy Banks.
Springy Banks, I apologize, yes.
Yeah. And we lost the case because the sidewalk was just put in, there was no, no study or nothing done.
So if we leave it alone, we have less liability.
Well, no, we should do it correct. Don't, don't just go and slap it down, do it the proper way.
Yeah, well, thank, thank you, Steve, and thank you, Chief. I was gonna try not to put you guys in the spot, but, uh, but certainly wanted your comments and, and they're helpful. Uh, I, I'm really happy we're talking about this. I think this is an issue, as everyone's alluded to, that's on everybody's mind. Certainly at the Springs CAC meetings, this comes up with, on Springs Road, street safety's probably the number one top of the conversation. Um, and I get that there is a real volume issue here in Wayne Scott. I travel those roads fairly frequently. And to Kate's opening comments, I, I totally agree that I think everybody has, um, good intentions here and I think everybody's voice counts. I don't think we should say, this group of people shouldn't have a say and this group should. I think this is an issue that's, that's an issue and, and we should be talking about it and I'm glad that we are. And this is the most public forum to do it, so hopefully there's more awareness now and the conversation will, will evolve. Um, to get into some of the specifics, I think, um, I agree, it seems like everybody agrees that on Sayers Path, um, southbound, there should be a stop sign. That, that's a dangerous intersection. If you're coming on Wayne Scott Stone Road and you have certain types of vehicles, you absolutely cannot see that traffic. And I think, um, I think that there should probably be the existing stop sign plus the, the southbound. And I think that crosswalk makes sense going to, to the sidewalk there. The stop sign, um, going eastbound or northbound on Sayers Path that would turn onto Wayne Scott, um, Stone Road, I, I don't see a necessary, any necessity for that. I think that that's gonna cause, um, more issues. Again, every, all my comments are just my initial instincts. I think that, um, would like to hear more from Highway Department, from the Chief of Police and, and maybe whatever studies happen. I know, Kate, you've done a lot more work on this than I.
No, I'm.
I know, but.
I, I.
So take, take them with a grain of salt.
Please go.
And then, and then as, as far as the Wayne Scott Stone.
The higher one up?
Yeah, Wayne Scott Northwest Road and Wayne Scott Stone.
Yeah.
It, it's one of these weird angles that causes issues for sure. Um, but I do, I would, I don't know that the stop signs on Wayne Scott Stone Road should be there if the visibility, if the sightlines were cleaned up. I think that the right answer would be to clean up those sightlines. Um, uh, as far as Beach Lane, um, this is probably the area that goes to the beach. There's a farm stand there, it's a popular area, there's a sidewalk on the other side. Uh, I'm open to a crosswalk there. You know, Steve Lynch pointed out something that I've heard in the past, which is once you have a crosswalk, you're sort of responsible for it. So you should make sure if you're, if you're telling pedestrians that this is where you cross, that you're creating a safe situation for them to do that. And I don't think I'm in favor of those stop signs because I think traffic's already, um, fairly slow and I think it's gonna cause, you know, if you're coming off of Sayers Path, it would be slowed down and, and I, I share the concerns about, um, the farmers who came in today. You know, there's, there's, there's trucks and wide equipment that goes down and sometimes stopping it isn't, isn't helpful. And so I, I, I'm not sure about the stop signs going east and west on Main Street. I'm, I'm open to a crosswalk there for sure. And then the last intersection would be by the school. Um, just looking at it, it looks like a lot of crosswalks there and I'm not sure where everybody's coming from. Uh, and, and I don't think I favor the stop signs going east and west there either. Although I, I think we should reach out to the school, I think we should get an, an opinion from them because, uh, you know, everybody cares about safety, nobody wants to see an accident, nobody wants to see anybody get hurt. Um, it's just a question of what is the right thing to do to address that problem? And I think that's what we're all talking about and we may agree or not agree on the details, but I don't think it's anybody's intention, um, that we want more safety or less safety, it's just how we achieve the goals. So, so again, I, I'm very sympathetic to the, uh, and, and then the pinch point there on Wayne Scott Hollow is, is real. And, you know, if you get a tractor with a wide implement stopped there and people can't go either way, I think we're actually probably creating a worse problem. Uh, and it's particularly on Wayne Scott Hollow, but all of these, all of these roads are so narrow and frequently traveled that the starting and stopping, I think, is going to be problematic. And, uh, to somebody's point earlier, a lot of the potato farmers are doing most of their driving and heavy work in, you know, after Labor Day where the stop signs would still be and, uh, might create unnecessary difficulty. I don't, don't have a full answer, but I just want to sort of voice those comments. And, and also bikes were mentioned a few times. I think, uh, Chief alluded to this, but I don't want to put words in his mouth. I think that frankly, having stop signs, we're setting up a situation where the bikes aren't gonna stop at the stop signs. Um, and so I don't know if that's a net gain or not. Uh, from, from my personal experience, when bikes are, are going down, say Abraham's Path or Town Lane, they don't stop at that four way and it creates some, some confusion and issues. And so, um, again, safety is important, but I think if we're creating safety for bikes, I think we have to acknowledge the fact that they ought to be following the same rules. Um, and I just don't know if that's a reasonable expectation. So I think this is the first step of the conversation and it's an important one. I tend to look at this with a sort of lighter hand and I think a lot of the comments today have been helpful and, um, curious to see where it goes.
So I could circle back, go by intersections on there. Um, I, I apologize. So Wayne Scott Stone, Wayne Scott Northwest, I could see a three-way intersection there with no crosswalks. I think that would be an appropriate location.
Wait, wait, you're on nine?
I'm on nine.
Okay, so I think I may have made too many Ian notes, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Now I have to do David notes, go ahead.
Uh, I'm good with the three-way. I don't, I don't know if there's a, the crosswalks are needed there then too? You'd be able to.
Three-way stop, no crosswalks?
If we go to, up to page eight, Wayne Scott Stone and Sayers Path, I think there would, uh, since you do have the, uh, you, you pretty much have a sidewalk to nowhere if you want to try to cross the street, I would mind to see if that's a location that would be appropriately legally for a crosswalk crossing Sayers Path and a stop sign heading south on Sayers Path.
Hmm.
Personally, I'm not good with, here's another thing. You put stop signs in, you've now created a potential nuisance for the house and the property that that stop sign's in front of. There's voyeurism, there's a greater amount of noise, greater amount of pollution for that property owner. So you're also gonna be very cognizant of the property owner that you're putting a stop sign in front of also, because now that person has, that property owner has to contend with all of that too. You go to a stop sign, what do you do? You look around. You go to a stop sign, you gas up, that's more noise, that's, it's more, you know, CO2 being, uh, missable. So you have to be very cognizant of that also then to personally, side note.
But I don't really see a, which house would be impacted.
I know, I'm just, I should have started with that, I just came to it now, so I apologize.
Unless you have an electric car, of course.
Yeah, uh, well, you still have voyeurism. So anyway, um.
Don't look in people's houses when you're at stop signs.
I don't think there's a need for stop signs. I wouldn't want to see it at Beach Lane and Wayne Scott Main. Personally, I think at the, at, uh, at the end of Wayne Scott Main and Sayers Path, Sayers Path would be a better location for, you know, making that a three-way stop and crosswalk down in that location. So I don't see it there on a, on the, uh, I don't see that to be in the proper location. This is nothing new that individuals have heard from Wayne Scott Main and Beach Lane. I don't support the stop signs, crosswalks there. I am more sympathetic to the school area. I do think that that might be an appropriate place for a four-way stop sign and two crosswalks. Uh, uh, until, uh, Bill came in, Mr. Tancowski, I didn't really look at it as far as a pinch point there, but I see it now. And that's why I was asking about the extension of the sidewalk, if we were to look at it for an additional culvert there. I don't know how long that is. There is funding that's out there now for the, for Wayne Scott, uh, from, from, uh, from the wind farm. This might be a location we might want to look at an intersection that'd be more appropriate with, uh, looking at, uh, public safety for children, vehicular safety and such. Um, those are my thoughts on it too.
David, can I just ask that if you could each just email these to me so I can articulate, you know, properly articulate them?
I just think one other thing we need to take into consideration if we are going with stop signs here is, you know, what are the end uses of the properties we've just acquired looking to be and how might that inflow, i- impact pedestrian traffic? You know, will people be crossing from the chapel over to the Osborne House? And, you know, do we need to consider additional crosswalk there or something? So I think that's just a, as we kind of look at traffic management plans and pedestrian traffic, let's finalize that too potentially.
And good point, Tom, and, uh, there is a crosswalk there right now, I believe, that goes from, um, it's a weird way. I mean, that this, the sidewalk ends before there and then you're going into a ravine pretty much there. Uh, that, that, there's been one there, I understand we were talking about the end use and the, or potential future uses. Um, but, uh, I could, I, I'm sympathetic for the children that want to be able to make sure they get across the street safely from school.
Yeah, me too.
Right.
That's big.
That's what I have.
And again, these recommendations for me, it's, the number one goal is safety.
Sure. Well, I mean, it's fair to say it, that's what we're all about.
Well, I've heard traffic comments and stuff like that, but for me, it's, it's safety.
So I, I will, we should reach out to the school.
Mm-hmm.
You want to do that? I'm happy to do that, we can figure that out.
No, we got to the school.
And I will follow up with the, the folks in the governor's office to see if I can get a ETA.
That would be great.
On the request for the 25 miles per hour. Um, okay, so let's keep moving.
Thank you all.
Because it's getting late.
Excuse me.
Next up is, uh, our department heads are here to present their 2024 accomplishments and 2025 goals. And our airport director, Jim Brundage, you're up first.
Thank you, welcome, I mean, good afternoon. Um, Jim Brundage, airport director. So, um, the airport's a little bit different from most departments in that, um, it's a self-sustaining enterprise. As such, we're basically running a business. I bring this up in the context of accomplishments and goals because my goal year in and year out is to manage the airport in a safe manner while still taking care of business. Having said that, in addition to the routine of running the, uh, business of the airport, there are things we can do to improve operations or safety every year. And those things that were done in 2024, uh, for improving operations and safety are listed as my accomplishments. So first we'll look at mission statement. Sorry, I have the glare behind there. Um, I can't see it, so I'll read it from here. So, mission statement of the airport is to operate and maintain air, the airport in accordance with town code, federal and New York state regulations in a manner that promotes safety and efficiency. To remote, to operate the airport in a manner consistent with the needs of the community while always being mindful of the environmental impact of airport operations on the community and its surrounding neighbors. And to manage the business of the airport to include managing leases, fuel sales, landing fees in the annual budget. Um, accomplishments, um, so for 2024, uh, up, upgraded, we upgraded ramp safety by installing eight, uh, ramp lights to provide illumination for passengers and ramp personnel after dark. The LED lights are controlled by a sensor, a sensor that turns them on at dusk and off at 10:00 PM when the airport is closed. I worked with the town purchasing agent to con, uh, contract an outside consultant to perform federal and state mandated maintenance items on the fuel farm that are beyond the ability of the town to perform. I worked with the town engineer and purchasing agent to have the fuel farm tanks painted in compliance with New York State DEC, Department of Health requests, actually. Um, and worked with the town airport engineer to have the runways and taxiways repainted. Okay, um, additionally, uh, we took measures to cease using the services of Mobile Smart City for airport paid parking, which is gonna save the town money. Um, uh, established a relationship with Park Mobile to manage that, uh, paid parking. Mobile Smart City levy to charge on the town for the services, while Park Mobile does not charge the town, so that'll be an improvement. Um, I provided support to the US Secret Service and White House staff for the presidential visit, 26 to 29 June, which doesn't necessarily improve safety, but it was a lot of fun and, and, uh, very interesting to deal with those people. Uh, helped to negotiate terms for Hawkeye Eleanor Group to lease airport property, which Helped to negotiate terms for Hawkeye Eleanor Group to lease airport property, which increased revenue to the airport. So those are some of the extra things we did in 2024. And for 2025, we're going to continue to try to promote safety for the airport. And the four major projects I have on the top of my list are repay runway 1634, which continues to be in a deteriorating condition, rehabilitate runway 1028 to repair pavement that has become uneven, repair taxiway Delta, which has become increasingly deteriorated, and replace the temporary control tower with a permanent structure that raises the tower cab high enough so that aircraft on the downwind leg for landing can be seen by controllers. And that's my report.
Anybody have any questions, comments for Jim?
No, I'm supportive of each of those, Jim, I mean, you've shown me each of those areas when I visited the site last year. And, you know, we need to get on them, so I look forward to getting them accomplished.
Great, thanks very much.
Yeah, I'm supportive, and I just want to say thank you, Jim, I know that the airports, you know, people have different opinions, it's a controversial place. I've seen that you deal with all sorts of people in a very polite and professional way. I've been to two different site visits, and I think you run a very professional operation there, and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, I enjoy it.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, next up is parks and building maintenance, Steve O'Brien, you're up.
Okay, hi again. So I'm responsible for the buildings, grounds and parks for the town as the town maintenance supervisor. We, as you all know, are responsible for the repair and upkeep and improvements of just about all the town facilities, parks, beaches, buildings. We've had a very busy year, I'm new to the department as of May, so it was my first summer. And while our accomplishments and tasks aren't as exciting as meeting with the Secret Service, if we, we only really get noticed if we don't do our job, right? So some of the accomplishments that we have listed here, although there's many, we've started a maintenance schedule, purchased some new equipment to help improve the recreational fields, keep them in a better condition throughout the playing season so that the public gets better use out of them. I've been working with my staff to reorganize the department, putting into different subsections with new leadership, promoting existing employees to positions of crew leader so that the team has a better sense of responsibility and ownership. Hopefully to, from what I've seen so far, it's been successful to increase productivity, reduce waste, and overall make the town a better place. We've collected this year over a million pounds of garbage from town trashcans, as well as beaches and litter patrol. We've been working with the town board and different departments to fabricate new signage throughout the town, which we continue to do all the time, like your new spring signs. And we're working on Jim's airport signs as we speak. We've assisted local groups with several community events, which we do year after year, all of which so far have been successful. I've made some strides in improving HVAC, heating and air conditioning repairs. We have several new green projects that we're working on in town buildings, working with our engineers to do that, as well as we help to make the town a little bit safer by installing, purchasing the climate-controlled storage shed for the Montauk Ocean Rescue and Life Saving Team. Looking forward to 2025, our goal is to reduce the part, some of our goals, excuse me, is to reduce the part-time staff on the off-season months by increasing the full-time staff members. In my belief, they'll be more dedicated to the job and will get a better result with less man-hours by doing so. I'd like to bring some more organization, as well as doing systematic routine, systematic inspections to properties and buildings so that we can get ahead and be more proactive instead of reactive to a lot of the situations that we come across on day-to-day. A better maintenance schedule for the parks, playing fields, as these sites get more and more usage in the season. It's nice when me as a parent, I show up to the park and the baseball diamond is perfect, or close to perfect. And I think it reflects on all of us as a town. I also hope to make significant progress in getting more of what I like to call the town bibles together for all of the buildings so that when there's an emergency or a situation, it's not relying on one person who knows everything. Anybody could open a binder and get the information they need to be responsive. I hope to be more of a motivating factor to my staff so that they take more pride in their work, as well as help reducing the waste of resources. And overall, just to bring a sense of organization to the department, which will again make us more efficient and better able to respond in the case of emergency or, you know, last-minute requests. That's about it.
Thank you, I have the advantage of going first, Jim, and I know we're all going to say the same thing here, but I can't tell you how impressed I've been with you since you've come on to the town, how you've approached this role and your department, so kudos to you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I do have concerns that you're under-resourced, you know, for the job at hand, for what you have to do. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but, but, you know, in terms of like the challenges you've got ahead with you in maintaining all the town buildings, you know, are there any areas where you feel that we as a town will get better investment for our buck?
I think with some of the capital projects that we put forward, by getting better equipment for the staff to use to help reduce, like we spoke about earlier, so that I don't have six people on a job where I could only have two people on a job. As we get better organized and instead of having kind of a mass of people respond to every incident and we can kind of get specialized crews to to respond or to do the day-to-day duties with more regularity so that they become more efficient at it, they, it becomes second nature. The whole idea of a roundsman of staff that are more versed at everything as opposed to specific jobs so that if you call in sick tomorrow, I have somebody that can step into your shoes as opposed to if you call in sick and you're the only one that can grade a ball field, for example, all work stops. We could use more resources, which I must say the board has been very supportive and I'm very grateful for that. As I'm getting more and more acclimated to what it is that we're ultimately responsible for, I could better answer that question. You folks were very generous where I was able to bring on five potential new full-time employees this year. That will certainly make us better equipped to respond. It's a difficult job because we interact with every department in the town, as well as the public. My two departments are really sub, many sub-departments, right? I have custodial, I have sanitation, electrical, plumbing. The hardest part really is finding qualified staff. Finding an HVAC technician that has some experience coming in is actually a very, very difficult thing to do. I was very lucky to find an electrician who's willing to come on board. But those are things that we can discuss later, like with, you know, pay scale and just availability of resources to the staff. I think we could get to a point where it's not so much.
Any training, kind of, you know, you talk about the cross-functionality of the staff, any training opportunities you want to pursue?
So I've spoken with Kathleen Root, HR, and a little bit with David Lees about actually training some of the guys in-house in different areas to help make up for some of those deficiencies. There's one gentleman in particular who works as a plumbing assistant right now. I'm looking into helping him get his EPA certification. It's something that I went through several years ago when I was in the heating trade, and it just made me a better technician. And I think he would be a great candidate to someone for us to send to school to get hands-on experience, to learn that, and therefore could be more of an asset to the team and the town. There's other examples of that in the groundskeeping crew, perhaps some small engine classes. There are electrical classes, there are industry things that we can do and send these guys to that I feel would make it a better team, as well make them more dedicated to the job. You know, I believe in promoting from within as opposed to going out and bringing somebody outside. If you have someone that's here for five years, you know, if you give them a little bump up and a pat on the back and help develop their skill set, they're more willing to do that extra mile for you. And I really believe in that.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
I think you said it all.
Yeah, I would just reiterate what Tom said, and especially, I think, when you talk about the training and sort of building structure to, and preventative maintenance, I think all of those things, and you have a really difficult job with a lot going on, but I think your approach is fantastic, and thank you for all you do.
I appreciate it.
And we love the more, you know, proactive than reactive, because the last thing you want is your phone blowing up with fire drills.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah, and when you really contemplate that, you know, you were brought onboard May, you know, at the height of the season. And how many, I don't think you listed, how many buildings are there in town?
So we're working on a definitive list based on an old list that we had and a list from the insurance company, but it's about 150 properties, 150.
It's amazing, because I always heard like 110 buildings.
No, yeah, no, there's between comfort stations and parks and all that stuff, it's a significant.
And your response time is amazing, I mean, there was an issue with a little vanity top issue with the public bathroom downstairs, and you were made aware of it, and you went literally immediately to work on it to get it fixed. So I want to thank you for all the fast response and how responsive you are. I don't know when you sleep, ever, maybe once in a while, but you do an amazing job, and so does your entire staff.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, so next up, we have our network and systems coordinator, Heath Liebman, to talk about IT. Welcome, Heath.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see you, everyone, IT.
Joining us today.
Oh, he's got me queued up already, quick.
Yes, Patrick's on it.
Okay. I know everyone has a good understanding of what IT is, but I'd like to bring a little bit more of what we do on a regular basis. See, I know that in addition to our projects and of course our mission statement, which would be our next slide, it's important to us in our department that we are always acting professionally and responsibly to the town staff and employees, so everyone understands we're here as an ally. We want to be a partner with making technology work for you. With that being said, I know that our vision is to help make it possible so everyone can see what technology can do for them, how we can bring them from an older antiquated system and methodology into a new, more streamlined and hopefully efficient newer technology to help assist them with getting more done with less resources. And that helps solidify our mission statement in IT where we are looking to provide that strategic vision. The enterprise solutions, the professionalism of the staff, and bring that all together so we can all meet our goals and deliver something valuable to everyone. So I know in 2024, we had a small bullet list of accomplishments. Some of you may remember the old view of our website, that has already been refreshed. We assisted multiple departments with digitization, specifically with file naming conventions. By proper naming of our files, it gives us more search criteria so when we use our internal servers, such as Paper Vision, to be able to search for those files, they then can become searched by multiple areas and not just by one tag, such as a tax map number. So if the tax map number is inadvertently entered incorrectly, we can still find the file by the other attributes in the file name. We've improved with a new GIS plotter, a web app developed by our GIS team. That's also part of checkboxes for this year, which we've gotten done. We've completed a hybrid cloud backup, which was another security feature which I was hoping to implement for the calendar year of 2024, and we got that accomplished. We we have improved our servers to a lower energy consumption. Our workstations, as many of you have been experiencing the workstation rollout this year, also are smaller footprint, which have a lower energy consumption so it will hopefully bring less of an electric bill than we've been experiencing over the years that I know is, it may be smaller, but it is very powerful, these new systems. We would also like to point out while working with purchasing, generating quotes and submitting quotes for all of these items we purchase, these take a lot of time and we do appreciate the inter-department collaboration at every turn. So anytime we're talking about working on quotes, we do a lot of quotes all year long. Some do get followed up with and others are excluded because of the inaccuracies or just not meeting our criterias. We have upgraded hardware and software at housing and community development. Their server has been upgraded from an older system, which was over 12 years old. And in server architecture, that can be quite old. And now we can move into this year and some of the things we've actually been looking at. We've been working with multiple departments on developing the online permitting through Open Gov. Online permitting is going to be a very user-friendly, very public-centric application portal, so the public will have an easy go at submitting new applications to the various departments that otherwise they would have had to come in only, and now they have the option of you can still come in or you can do it online. That is very close to deployment, will be there, we're looking for next month as a launch date. And as departments are more and more adopting the permitting and getting their development done, they'll be brought on as well. We have new workstations currently being deployed, some people have already received these deployments. We caught a slight snag because Adobe is not offering the license model they used to have, so we are now getting a license model, which is going to be an annual subscription. So that is a slight delay, but we are still, we just got new quotes in today, actually. We are hoping to deploy an off-site backup replica. That would be one of the cybersecurity solutions that is in addition to the solutions we have been implementing pretty much every year. That would provide what is considered a hot site, so we are able to immediately fall over into a hot site environment in the event of a disaster or catastrophe that may occur. We're hoping we don't, we hope we never have to use it, but it's best to have something available than not when we need it. Additionally, we want to deploy some other cybersecurity enhancements. The enhancements I'm looking at is a zero-trust secure access service, and that is also in the capital funding, which we're hoping gets approved. That will provide multiple benefits in addition to providing a secure portal, more granular restriction on access in and out from the, from a web standpoint. And it does provide some new features, such as your trust, network access, secure web gateways, browser isolation. These are the features we're hoping to leverage in the next go-round. We are currently replacing several end-of-life firewalls with the current technology, current generations, two of which are done, third will be going in when the tower goes live.
Are you talking to?
Tower.
May.
Tower goes live, uh, uh, May.
May, so we'll have that one in on May. It's already ready and configured in my office, just waiting for the service to get turned on. We have a project planned for assistance in replacement of our time clocks. We have been informed that the vendor we were currently using was purchased out by a bigger vendor, always bought by a larger fish. And in the process, they have hardware requirements for the new vendor's support. They already gave us notice of EOL for the devices, so we anticipated that and I believe we have funding set aside for that as well. We have a GIS upgrade and migration scheduled for this year. We also have a public-use web app, which I believe Bob has informed me we are live, and it is ready to go. We will be, we have been working with the town. We will be, we have been working with town clerk with investigating other municipality options for a replacement for Minutrac. And we are, of course, going to follow whatever Carol's lead is and provide whatever support we can to make it a smooth transition. We have new AV for the 300 pan go suite going in. In fact, Steve's people were there putting in the media shelf as a DVD player. We have a system in there, so it is now capable for Zoom and Teams meetings. And there is a phone for conferencing as well in the office. So we are moving right along on that. We just are going to go through a few final tests and make sure that screen sharing is done from the workstations or laptops and can be incorporated as well. And finally, I should state, we've already completed our upgrade and deployed a new email message archiver. It's actually already in place, and I don't believe anyone noticed when I switched the.
It's not Barracuda?
It is Barracuda. It is a new updated Barracuda, and it is already in place. We swapped it over last month, I believe.
Funny, because I couldn't find Barracuda.
Yeah. It might have been that. I didn't either.
When I went the other day to search normally at the top in the screen, it says Barracuda.
Right, right.
And you click on it to be able to put your search in, and it, I couldn't find it. You almost got a call, but then I got distracted and something else came up, but.
You got, you got an email at 11.
Is it in the beginning, in where the options are now?
Uh, it is not in the options in the email program. I actually need to redeploy that. However, it is accessible through a web browser.
Okay, so maybe you could send an email out to us so that we know how to.
Absolutely.
But it would be helpful to have it back in our outlook.
It'll be there and also accessible from home, too.
Oh, good, because that's great.
Although home will be through the browser.
Got it.
And I would like to point out, sometimes when you do call us, we are tied up, and that's because of our day-to-days. What IT does on a day-to-day basis, I know that a lot of times you see us all busy working on something. It is constant. And, and when I say day-to-day, I mean really every day, we go through our checks. We have a punch-down list, just like everyone else in, uh, in building a building would have. We check our antivirus servers every day. We perform scheduled backups every day. We check the usage levels on all the servers. We check for runaway processes, anything that might be over-consuming them. We check for disk space on the devices to make sure that things don't crash because we've run out of space. We check the mail functionality and connectivity. We check our printer statuses to make sure there aren't jobs sitting in the printers that people have been trying to get to print and have notified us that there's been a problem. We check auditing outputs. We check our communication links. We check for unattended log-on sessions. That's usually something that could lead to something worse. We review our firewall logs every day. We review our backup logs every day to make sure everything was successful. We review helpdesk for projects that we've been working on and need to be prioritized or reprioritized. I know I point out the helpdesk. We actually maintain an internal helpdesk system, which I know every year we try to get the metrics out. And last year, in 2024, we accomplished 2,172 helpdesk calls above far normal day-to-day activities. I know from our database side, our database person fulfills most of the FOIL requests that come in. They provide the database support for the department. Specifically, you'll see a large amount of database support go through planning, go through the assessor's office, go through the tax receiver's office. They do functionality tests. They check for any configurations that might need to be adjusted. They make sure that they troubleshoot all of the issues that may come up. We have the support during the board, during the Board of Assessment Review, which will be coming up shortly as well, and that is handled predominantly through our database side. Throughout the year, our database side assists with the tax generation of the bills as well as the assessments. And the role itself is predominantly handled through Christine. Our GIS team, they, I saw those great maps in Kate's presentation, and I definitely recognize that's a handiwork of our GIS guys.
Yes, it is.
They are fantastic, always willing to stop whatever they're doing to make sure you guys get what you need as quickly as possible. In addition to that, they do scheduled maintenance on the GIS servers. They support the entire staff for GIS logins, so a planner or someone from ordinance. Anyone who has access to the GIS systems will be able to contact our guys at a moment's notice for immediate assistance. They provide data analysis. They provide map requests, custom layer requests, as well as the GIS servicing, where they'll go out and actually plot with their portable devices and actually get mapping done in the field. As well as doing end-user tutorials, which they will provide any training anyone needs for our GIS system, as well as individual one-on-one personalized, uh, training. So with that, I do want to say we are on target and look to have our goals well in hand. We, um, we're really anticipating a very good year this year with getting everything done early, and, and then we'll, uh, pull the things off of the back burners and make them front burners. So if there's any questions, please.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm very excited for your department this year. I, I think OpenGov, um, which we gave the demonstration to the department heads of last week, is going to have such huge benefits for town employees and town residents. Um, and, and huge congratulations in getting that to you, um, at this point. I know we've got one or two little speed bumps in planning that I'm, you know, I'm hoping to work with them to see what, you know, their priority list is. And, you know, as a board, I think we might want to discuss how we assign, um, you know, their role with OpenGov to, to get this out as soon as possible, because I think it's, it's a win across town. I would also think it'd be great to do a work session where Bob came in and gave an overview of the public GIS tool. He walked me through it. It's, it's going to be so useful for so many people. So, um, you know, great win there. I think keep up the good work. I mean, you've been incredibly helpful to me from the very nuanced tech requests to the basic ones. You know, turning off my internal replies to all town employees, which must have been driving people nuts. So thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you. And I do want to point out, it is a multiple department effort. It's not just IT. It's a lot of lifting from a lot of different departments to make the OpenGov happen. So I don't want people to think this is only IT. We don't do it alone.
So for myself, I, I think you also, uh, an individual has to be able to recognize where their faults are or where, where I'm not as strong as in, strong in, excuse me, English language, too. One of them is IT. Okay, so for me to be able to do my job here, I need individuals behind me in the IT department. That's what you've always been, and you, and all your department staff to help us, assist us to get to a point where we are now past COVID and everything's digitally done even more so then, too. And then to protect it, because there are just way too many people in this world that want to do mal-harm to government right now. And you protect all the residents from spending millions of dollars trying to recover this by staying in front of it. Not going to tell the ways, because that's not here for. But I also recognize where my weaknesses are, and that's in IT. So I appreciate you being strong in it.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, David, you, you took the words right out of my mouth. We saw what happens when a system is vulnerable with the county and, and the millions of dollars, plus the inconvenience to taxpayers, the inaccessibility of records. And I know it's a daily, minutely, by the second, microsecond threat. Um, and of all the things you do, um, I really appreciate your proactiveness on cybersecurity and always staying ahead, ahead, because that's not easy in today's world. So I really appreciate that work from your team.
Thank you so much.
I basically do my own coding, so I don't really need your help. I'm joking. I'm like the rest of them, and I do need your help, as you know, and I always appreciate it. But I just want to highlight the, the OpenGov and the presentation you gave recently. I think that that's another example, like I was giving credit to Steve, that, you know, doing some work and structuring things to make it easier and more efficient is going to help the town, the public, and everybody. And, uh, I'm really looking forward to that, and I know Tom's worked hard on it as well. And, uh, as you've mentioned, a lot of other departments, so thank you for that and all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. I had already written down, we'll have Bob Mason come in to do a, a town board work session on the GIS public use web app.
That's outstanding.
Yeah, I think that's going to be great, because I, I, I know we looked into it. Tom, when you came on, that's one of the main things he wanted to work on then, too. And I don't think the public really recognized there's more than Google Maps out there to, to assist them.
I want to make something very clear, like I've done bare minimum compared to these guys. This is all the work's been carried by your department and the internal team, so I don't want to.
Great. Thank you, Heath.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, we've got Kathleen Root, our town personnel officer, to talk to us about human resources.
Good afternoon, and thank you for inviting the department heads to come up. And it really makes you think about what you're doing, what you can do better, which is sometimes hard to take that step back when you've been in a department for a while. For me, it's my eighth year, and it's, it's definitely can get, you have to keep a fresh face on it. So just to start with my mission statement, our mission statement, not mine. For any employer, employees are the most valuable resource. So the Human Resources Department's mission is to focus on human capital management by recruiting, training, managing, and retaining employees. The responsibilities of the department are to provide employees with information on benefits, career tracks, navigate, how to navigate civil service, and providing them with new training opportunities. And the goal of the department is to create an environment in which employees' growth and experience contribute to the success of town operations and provide excellent service to its citizens. So the 2024 accomplishments, it can really kind of be divided into two major categories. One is civil service. We all work within the civil service system. Sometimes it's a little bit hard to handle, but we have to try our best. Like in private sector, we would always say, drive business. How do we drive business? How do we drive hiring? We have to be creative, and we have to work with them. It's frustrating at times, but we will come up with new ideas. This past year in 2024, I worked with them to change the minimum qualifications for a couple of titles that enabled us to promote people and hire people into those titles. Also, it's working with the department heads and trying to figure out how to best serve them and get the titles they need, not to put too much of my feeling into it, but to understand what they want from me and to try to make that happen. So that's really working with civil service. I mean, we worked, we did have some successes, some frustrations, as, as we all know. And the other part, I think that we were very successful in, in 2024 was the New York State mandated training sessions, which really, we really opened up. We gave employees a lot of different opportunities and platforms to do the training and get that done. And also working with Ed Michaels to partner, because part of the workplace violence training, it has to be very specific to each town. Like you just can't do the generic. That's why people say, oh, I did it for the fire department. Can I use it here? Well, we can't, because it's different when you're working in the planning department, what, what, what that looks like. So Ed Michaels did just a fabulous job and really worked with every department to see what the concerns were and to try to make that training as specific to that department. I think that was a huge success. For 2025, my goals are a little bit contingent on hiring a second full-timer in the department. We have the employee benefit supervisor job open. We have had five applications, four who, the people, four of whom unfortunately did not meet the minimum qualifications. But there is one out there, and I'm kind of excited, but I'm not going to say anything else until I know for sure. But this could be something that, that works out for us. And I think really bringing that person in is going to help free, free us up to be really introspective in the kind of job that we're doing. Like, how can we be better at benefits? How can we be more responsive and cut our time when we get back to people? And, and just to create tracking, new reports to track who's brought ID and correct ID to be into night shift. I know all of this does, doesn't sound very glamorous, but it's the things that we have to worry about every day. And, um, so with any luck, that will happen for us. And if that happens, even if that doesn't happen, we'll have to figure out a way to do, do these sort of things. But we want to model the in-person training that Purchasing did last year and bring people in and let them go, we can talk about counseling memos for certain groups. We can talk about disciplinary procedures, worker, workers' compensation procedures. Like, we still get like old forms for this and, and things like that. So we really want to try to focus on that, too. We're going to continue with New York State mandated training opportunities. And there's also a new recruitment module for our payroll software, which is Munis, and in ESS. So we're actually viewing, um, a Zoom meeting that happened the other day. I didn't get to see it live because I was doing interviews that day. But we have the recording, so we can look at it and see if there's anything possible in there. Also, we're hoping that if we, um, to incorporate a third-party certification software for electronic signatures, which will cut down on the in-person time that we need to get paperwork processed. In last year, I think we did like 238 returning and new part-time employees for the season. And there was not very many, but many, very many of us doing that downstairs. So that was kind of a huge commitment for two months. But now we're hoping that if we can get, maybe a new payroll software update or incorporate the third-party certification, it's going to help us out. And every year, I want to use Paper Vision, because I want to get rid of some of the books we have down there, which are very, very, very old and very ugly outside my office. So we're going to try that again this year if we can get the staffing up to where we need it. And just to let you know, too, that we, we not only help, right now we have 337 full-time employees, 102 mixed part-time, some are seasonal right now, many are year-round. We have 280 retirees and surviving spouses. We have to also help 20 volunteer firefighters who are on our healthcare plan. So some, I mean, definitely we know when maybe things don't go right, but every day, like you have to go in. It's like playing golf, right? So it's a competition against yourself. Every day you have to go in and be better. But we handle these issues every single day down there. And it seems like maybe we have a small department, but we really actually have a very huge department, considering the people that we have to assist. I just wanted to say that. That's it.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so you said "hard to handle" by the Black Crowes, one of my favorite songs of all time. "Civil Service is Hard to Handle." So I'm glad you're handling it, Ben, too, because it can be, it could be an anchor within municipal government, if you wanted to say so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate the job you do with them. I, I think it's a much bigger problem. I think it's one of the fundamental threats to operations of town is civil service. And honestly, I would like to kind of us to consider a task force with other towns on the East End of how to address this, because it, it's problematic. Hiring people to fill roles in critical positions is something we're not able to do. We have to be able to change this. So, you know, if, if we need to kind of partner up with other towns to figure out ways to do this, because I don't know if we necessarily being hired effectively, it's just our own town.
That's it?
Yeah, thank you, Kathleen. Obviously, hiring our, you know, employees for town to, to run the town is amongst the most important things that we do, and I appreciate the effort. I certainly won't pretend to understand civil service a year in, but I recognize the issue and appreciate your work.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kathleen. Okay, last up on our, for topics, is the special events fee discussion. Tom, did you want to tee it up?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Supervisor. So special events is evolving. More and more people across town wish to do events, both private and commercial. And, um, you know, each application that comes in is reviewed by the special events committee, and all information is collated, collected, and processed by the town board secretaries. We've kind of, we've gone through estimates of numbers, et cetera. I would say close to 80% of their workload is associated with special events. So, you know, operationally, that has its own challenges. You know, as we kind of look to modernize government, you know, I think one of the critical roles for us to fulfill is kind of examine, you know, what are the costs we have associated with different operations? And, you know, if this is an incremental service that's being provided to the residents of the town or to commercial entities, are we charging effectively for it? And so, you know, we've kind of gone through and, you know, just had a look at rough estimates, because you can't get an exact number on this. And, you know, if I ask PD to say, how much time are you going, spending going out reviewing the parking plan? You know, it might be coinciding with something else. You can't get the exact number. But, you know, I think it's safe to say that in the last year, the hours we're spending on special events, um, you know, is, the cost is not being met by the revenues that are coming in from special events. So we have to look. met by the revenues that are coming in from special events. So we have to look to address that. And, you know, what we're going to do today is review the proposed changes for 2025, you know, and along with that, kind of a slight review of where we're seeing the most traffic and, you know, where we kind of want to put the most change into the structure. And, you know, this really does go back to, you know, the goals of the comprehensive plan. You know, how do we kind of maintain that culture that we have out here? So, you know, one of the threats that we definitely see in terms of, to the town goals, is the commercialization of public space. And, you know, it's something that we have to manage, because this is your town. That is your space. And while people may want to do commercial events there, that shouldn't take away from your enjoyment of the town. So we have to marry those two and account for it accordingly. So with that, I'll hand over to Chelsea. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good afternoon. Chelsea Winslow, Legislative Secretary. Sorry, I haven't had enough coffee today.
Good afternoon, Chelsea. Good afternoon, Emery.
Good afternoon, Town Board.
Evening. Lights outsider on, just the lamppost.
Anne Marie Lamprecht, also Legislative Secretary. And Chelsea's going to start the presentation?
Okay. So what we're going to go through today is, we're going to introduce the Special Events Committee, and then go through the types of permits and applications. We'll do an annual recap of the permits issued in 2024, permit categories, and the fees collected in 2024. We'll have a note about the fee changes over the years, and then the proposed fee schedule updates for 2025. So the Special Events Committee meets weekly to review the special event applications. Typically, it's weekly during the busier seasons, but right now, we're not meeting weekly just yet. The committee first started meeting in January 2014 and was codified in spring of 2022. The committee consists of Kate Rogers, Deputy Supervisor, David Brown, Chief Fire Marshal, Frances Bock, Clerk of the Trustees, John Rooney, Superintendent of Recreation, Chief Sarlo, Chief of Police, Tom Flight, Councilmember. And then we have Carol Brennan, Town Clerk, Anne Marie and myself, and a representative from the Town Attorney's Office.
Types of permits and applications.
Anne Marie, you're going to have to be closer to the microphone for them to pick it up.
Sorry.
And just before you go further, when we say we meet weekly, these meetings are at least an hour and a half, two hours. In the summer, even longer. So I just wanted to give a timeframe of what, it's more than a 10-minute meeting.
Yeah, we have one tomorrow, and it's going to probably be at least an hour and a half.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Already.
Yeah, sorry. And it goes higher when we have guests involved, so keep that in mind.
In previous years, there was one special event permit application that applicants would fill out to obtain one of six types of special event permits. There are now six separate applications that will be used to apply for the appropriate permit. Permit types, as defined in Town Code Chapter 151, are as follows. And actually, we do have seven. There's only six in the Town Code, but we have added a catered event application permit as well. So we have residential, commercial, public, catered event, parade walk, run, ride, and art sale, and seasonal. If you want me to read all the definitions, I can, but, okay.
Okay, so now we're at the annual recap of the permits issued over the years. So starting in 2018, there were 547, 577 in 2019, only 78 in 2020 because of COVID, 498 issued in 2021, 582 permits issued in 2022, 536 in 2023, and then 516 last year. I just want to make a note of the decrease in permits issued between 2022 and 2024. It's not because we did less applications, but because we started grouping certain categories together. So, for example, farmers markets, they would have 22 events, but we put those all on one permit. It's not that we had less applications or less events coming in.
Next is the permit categories and fees collected in 2024. For residential, we gave out 138 permits, and we have four different categories: application fees, permit fees, non-resident fees, and late fees. And we collected $15,850. For public, we did 157 permits, and total, we collected $5,410. We had collected cleanup deposits, but they are refundable. So that's why you see that $7,250 in red. They were returned to the applicant. We then did 151, we gave out 151 permits for commercial, and we collected $56,299, which is obviously the highest revenue category. Catering, we did, and these are like catered events on the beach, most of them were, some are Maidstone. We did 33 permits, and then we collected $10,000. Seasonal, we gave out 16 permits, and we collected $26,100. $5,000 were returned for cleanup deposits. So that number does reflect after the returned money.
And when you say seasonal permits, that's the surf camps?
Surf camps, surf lessons, and farmers markets.
Thanks.
Parade walk, run, ride, we gave out 19 permits, and we collected $4,400.
Just one thing I want to say about those quickly is that, you know, processing different types of permits takes significantly different amounts of time. So we're talking about a triathlon going on. The amount of planning that has to go into that is significantly more than someone hosting a party for, say, 30 people in their backyard. So you can't equate the time to the number of permits specifically.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I was just going to add on to that, that, you know, each time we say 138 permits issued, the amount of time per application is phenomenal, because it's a long application. A lot of folks need help filling it out. And maybe this year, we could track phone hours that you both spend explaining things and going back and forth in emails. Each application is, it takes a considerable amount of time. And then it has to come in front of the committee. We often, just in terms of process, because it sounds so one slide, in terms of process, then members of the committee often have questions for the applicant that go through both of you. And then the applicant has to come back with us, or there's an unsatisfactory parking plan. So there's, when we say an application or a permit issued, that's multiple hours of time spent on each of those sentences.
Yes.
So please note, some special event fees were changed as of January 2024, but until then, they had not been updated since 2018. So the proposed fee schedule updates are 2025. We do in one column, if you want to just, thank you. On the side, to the right in blue, some of the 2024 fees have been marked that were changed. But the rest, if they don't have a mark next to it, those haven't been updated. So we can start at the top with the residential special event fees. For town residents, the application fee, there's no fee for 50 to 149 attendees, and there's also no permit fee. The non-refundable application fee is now $50. There was no application fee in 2024. And the permit fee is now, I'm sorry. Am I reading this correctly? Did I skip one?
So 50 to 149.
Now I'm going down to, okay, so 150 to 249 attendees. The permit fee is $250. That hasn't changed. The non-refundable application fee is $100. There previously was not an application fee. And then the permit fee for 250 or more attendees is $500. That also has not changed.
So this is one of the kind of significant changes we're proposing for this year, is that the, you know, the non-refundable application fees. Historically, that hasn't been there. And honestly, the amount of time we're spending processing applications, even when a permit's not issued, that's time. That's taxpayer money. And we need to make sure we're recouping that as appropriate.
For a non-resident hosting a residential special event, the non-refundable application fee was previously $100. That's gone up to $250. The permit fee for 50 to 149 attendees is $250. 150 to 249 attendees is 500, and 250 or more is 750. These have not changed from 2024 to 2025. The commercial special event on commercial property, the application fee was previously $100. We've raised that to 200. And the permit fee, which is per day of the event, was $200, is now 250. The public property special event, the social event on public property for a town resident, the non-refundable application fee, we did not have one last year. We're proposing $100, just to try and keep it consistent. The permit fee for 1 to 49 attendees, there's no fee. 50 to 99 is $50. 100 attendees to 249 is $100. And this is where it starts to go back up. It's 250 to 999 attendees. It was previously $250. It would now be 375. And then 1,000 or more was 500. It would now be 750. The added $100 for each commercial vendor, that's not changing. Non-resident, there was a non-refundable application fee of $100. That would go up to 150. The permit fee for 1 to 49 attendees was 100, which would go up to 150. 50 to 99 would raise from 250 to 300. 100 to 249 attendees would stay 500. 250 to 999 attendees would go up from 750 to 850. And 1,000 or more would go up from 1,000 to 1,250.
And the $100 subject.
And then, yes, we have the $100 subject added fee for each commercial vendor.
Okay. The refundable cleanup deposit under that category, 1 to 49 attendees would be $100. None of these fees have changed. 50 to 99 attendees would be $250. 100 to 249 attendees would be $500. 250 to 999 attendees, $750. 1,000 to 2499 attendees would be $1,000. And 2,500 or more attendees would be 2,500. Again, this is a refundable cleanup deposit if we don't have to use town resources for cleanup. Traffic control fee is calculated by the town. The next category is the seasonal commercial event on public property for commercial recreation, recreational activity. Previously, the non-refundable application fee was $100, and we are proposing a $200 application fee for 2025. The permit fee for the seasonal use of town properties on the ocean, for a resident, it previously was $4,000. We are proposing $5,000. For a non-resident, it was previously $10,000, and that $10,000 will stay the same. The permit fee for the use of town properties on the bay, for a resident, it was previously $2,000, and we are proposing a $2,500 fee. For a non-resident, that will stay the same at $6,000. The permit fee for the seasonal use of town parks and public properties, for a resident, it previously was $2,000, and the proposing fee now is $2,500. And the non-resident fee would stay the same at $6,000. The refundable seasonal cleanup deposit is $1,000. We've also added this category now, a seasonal summer camp. That is, the non-refundable application fee for that was $100, and now it is $200 is the proposed fee. And the permit fee was also $100, and now we're proposing $5,000. We had it listed as a daily fee.
Yeah, it was a hole in our pricing system, truthfully. That's why it's such an extreme change.
Yes, it was, yeah, a daily fee. So why I say it's a new category, because we added it as a seasonal summer camp.
We have two types of summer camp applications. One is where a summer camp, an existing summer camp in town would bring their clients to the beach for a couple hours, a couple of days in the summer. That's still the same as a daily fee.
Because under public, right, a daily public.
But then we also now have types of summer camps on, one in particular, a summer surf camp on the beach, two of them, that are there for the entire season. And that's an extended season usually as well.
And the refundable seasonal cleanup deposit is $1,000 for that one.
Okay, we also added another new category to the fees. Because there are so many farmers markets happening now, they have their own bucket. So previously, there were no specific fees to the farmers markets. We have a non-refundable application fee of $200, a permit fee of $2,000, and a non-resident fee of $2,500, with the refundable cleanup deposit of $1,000. For the parade walk, run, ride.
Those are for profit.
Yeah. I thank you for bringing that up, because that is something, yeah, this is not for profits. There are no fees. But, you know, I'm going to speak candidly here. One thing we are seeing is kind of an ethical abuse, I guess, of nonprofit status in some applications. And we're really taking a closer look at that as we go forward. So for anything coming in with a nonprofit application, we now require certification of your status and, you know, understanding of, you know, what exactly is going on with the operation. Because, you know, we are all in favor of supporting, you know, bona fide charitable organizations, but that really shouldn't be used to promote commercial activity. So that's just my two cents on that.
For the parade walk, run, ride special event, the application fee was previously $100. That would go up to 200. The permit fee for 1 to 49 attendees stays at $100. 50 to 99 stays at $250. 100 to 249 raises from 500 to 750. 250 to 999 goes up from 1,000 to 1,250. 1,000 to 2,499 is still at 2,500. And then 2,500 or more attendees is $5,000. The traffic control fee is calculated by the town. And the refundable cleanup deposit under this category for 1 to 49 attendees was previously $100. That goes up to 5. 50 to 99 was $250. That goes up to 1,000. 100 to 249 was $500. That goes up to 2,000. 250 to 999 was 750, which goes up to 3,000. 1,000 to 2,499 was 1,000. That goes up to $4,000. And then 2,500 or more was $2,500. That goes up to 10,000.
Very simple message here. Clean up your mess.
For the art sale special event, there haven't been application or permit fees. This is specifically for people having art sales at their residences.
And the Town Code allows three a year. And this is if you, if you have an art sale at your, specifically at your residence, of your own work, of your own work.
Correct. The late application fees have gone up as well. For 1 to 100 participants, it was previously $100. It's now $200. 101 to 249 participants is up to $500 rather than $250. 250 to 999 participants goes up to $2,000 instead of 1,000. And then 1,000 or more participants is at $5,000 instead of 2,500. With an additional fee, if an application is submitted within one week of the event, you'll be charged an additional $250 on top of the late application fee.
Yeah. And so just to quickly talk to this one, this has been incredibly problematic. Like every business, the summer season for this department is at its busiest. And, you know, if we have applications coming in last minute that they need to process, that really impacts other operations. So this is partially deterrent, but it's partially reflective of the time that they would have to take out of their regular operations to process this.
And right on top of the application fee, of the applications, it does say the timing.
Yeah.
And it's based on how many folks or how many participants are in your event. So the smaller events, of course, they can come in much closer. But when we're talking about very large, substantial events, or even film shoots, we need time to set it up with PD. Roads maybe need to be closed. And if all this happens at last minute, it makes it very difficult for us to process it, to take time away, particularly during the season, when you have fire marshal out every day in the field, you have PD out every day in the field, you have recreation out every day in the field. And for them to stop everything and to now take the time out to properly process an application, it's a very difficult process for us. And it actually can involve overtime as well.
I mean, it also, it does have a snowball effect. Anytime a late application comes in, I mean, I think we said this the last time we presented fee changes, late applications come in, it kind of just sets us back reviewing all the applications we were already working on. And I will disagree that it's not just for the large events. Even a small event, we've had people come in the day of their small, like, house party or something. It still does have an effect.
And that's why the difficulty.
Regardless of, yeah, regardless of the headcount, the later it is, it just, it always kind of sets us back. So.
Yeah, and it's hard to send an email out the day of to all of the committee members and try to get feedback from everybody on a Friday afternoon.
Right.
So that, that part is difficult. I think we might have skipped one page, number 10, page 10.
You did?
Yes. If you don't mind us going back. For the commercial caterers on town beaches, I don't think we.
Got you. No, you're right. I don't think we did that one. Sorry, folks.
Okay, so I'm going to read that one. Oh, the corporate. So actually, for page nine, the refundable cleanup deposit was for the public property special event. So it would be the refundable cleanup deposit for 250 to 999 attendees, it's $750. And 1,000 or more attendees, it's $1,000. Traffic control fee is calculated by the town. Commercial caterers on town beaches, for beach catered events, there's an allotment of maximum of 50 attendees, not including staff allowed on the beach. The non-refundable application fee is $100. And the permit fee for last year was $150. We're proposing $200 for one to 50 attendees. And the non-resident fee is an added fee of $100, which we did not have a fee last year. The commercial special event on public property, the non-refundable application fee we're proposing is 150 for this year. It was 100 last year. And the permit fee is per day. One to 49 attendees is $100. 50 to 99 attendees was $250 last year. We're proposing 300 for this year. 100 to 249 attendees, last year was $500. We're proposing $600 for this year. 250 to 999 attendees is $1,000. 1,000 to 200, 2,499 attendees is $2,500. And 2,500 or more attendees is $5,000. And the $100 sub, $100 is subject to added permit fee for each commercial vendor. And that should do it. Sorry about the mix-up with the.
Thank you.
The one, one thing I'll just add for the staffing of this is during the season, we do have to budget and hire a part-time help to help process these applications. I don't know if we mentioned that in this presentation.
Yeah, we factored that into, kind of, when we're looking at costs. So that, that cost the town just that part-time, roughly, I want to say $6,500. So, yeah, it's, it's not very. The other thing, and the good news on this, I do want to say, it's like, this is one of the next areas that I'd like Open Gov to address. Because, you know, in terms of submissions, making sure people have the right documentation, we can automate a lot of that, and I think it will help us operationally.
And then they can't submit incomplete applications, they say, especially if they can't.
That's the biggest, that's the biggest problem.
Tracking people down because they didn't give you their parking plan, or the sketch, or whatever, that's.
Or they just didn't even fill out the application page.
Narrative.
Yeah. It's crazy. But.
So next steps, this goes for just resolution, because the code reads that we can, by time to time, change, change.
Correct.
So there's only, there's one thing, seasonal summer camp. Summer camp by definition, you know, if you look at this definition, I don't think we can have, a season, so a summer camp is an entity, an organization, which provides and organizes recreational activities for school-aged children during the summer months. So it's already giving you a timeframe, right? When school is not in session. Such camps must be primarily located at another physical site. So you have to have a brick and mortar, right? So this was, definition was for like, folks like the Raw School, or the YMCA, you know, that are sending kids to, Sport Time, that are sending kids to the beach. It's not meant to be, I, I think that, I know you're, you mentioned surf camps. I think that was always.
Surf summer camp.
That was always kind of put in with surf lessons. So I just, I think we just have to go back to the town attorneys, and, you know, it, make sure that, I don't know if that's a bucket we can use.
You don't want to put the schools in the same bucket as people who operate seasonal camps.
Yeah, and that's why the code is written the way it is. The code was written for folks like the Raw School.
The ones that go down for a couple of days.
YMCA, and Sport Time, and whatever, that sends their kids for half a day.
Now we have kids surf, surf camps.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we've had them since 2014. But, but I just, so that's the, I think we need to get some clarification from Jake when he gets back.
Okay.
So that's just what I wanted to point out.
With that, I, I think they're all reasonable for amount of time going in. Tom, you mentioned that, and too, if you go around that, that room, the amount of time hourly goes in for these applications, particularly the large ones, it, it's, it's not a single digit.
No.
Any which way. So, so I, I think they're, they're reasonable, and Tom will hear. But resolution, I think that should be done relatively quickly, knowing that you're accepting applications for the summer season.
Yeah.
Which is around the corner.
Yeah, so the sooner we could do it is March 6.
We've got applications being submitted into October already. We're, we're getting them in now.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
I'm glad to get them in early.
Just trying to get through the weekend.
To the weekend, maybe.
I support all of the, all the changes, too. And I just want to, you know, Tom and Kate, I see you guys in here. Sometimes I come in and out, and you're still in the meeting. So I appreciate what you do. And especially Chelsea and Anne Marie, I know how much time you spend. I think we live in a lovely place. People want to celebrate. And it's good that we have this, but it's work. And even with the raised fees, we should all acknowledge that the town is going to lose money on this process, you know, because we want people to enjoy themselves.
Exactly.
It also goes back to public safety.
Yep.
Making sure this is appropriate and safe. Can I just, while everyone's here, I know Steve's here also, Steve's department building the ground. As far as special event permits is, is going to be doing a pilot program for the summertime. As far as picnic tables, picnic tables have a lot, a lot of labor intensive moving. We're going to be looking for foldable picnic tables to deploy at the appropriate times. So I think Steve will talk to you about it. We can, you can pack up a truck with 15 picnic tables, two men, instead of one truck, two picnic tables, two men. So it's a lot less time and effort, but you're getting the same, same output on it. So that's something we might want to let applicants know that have requested them in the past. And too, Steve will alert you to that. I'm so sorry to add that on there.
Thank you, guys. Very nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So just so folks know, we have an interview at 5 o'clock.
Okay.
And we have outside counsel that needs to meet with us, so.
So I'm going to be super quick with my liaison report. In terms of urgencies, there's nothing that cannot wait till March, truthfully. So let's just go there.
Nature Preserve Committee met last week. I was not in attendance, because I was out in Montauk with the state, talking about their fire preparation plans. So I'll bring that up next time. The only thing is I have an application on right today for a one-time mow of 66 Main Street, Wayne Scott. That is something that happens on an annual basis there. It's main things, very similar to what we do at some of our other locations, like Bossa Potter on Stony Hill, that keep woody growths down. Has to be done in a certain amount of year, not to interfere with, with animals. And so, so that's on. And that's all I have, and I can talk to you in March.
Great. Thank you. Yes, and I'll, I'll save my report for March.
Very, very quickly, the Spring CAC meets tonight at Ashwaghat Hall at 6:00 PM, which is just about an hour away at this point. Property Management is next Wednesday at 4:30. Ag Advisory met last week. I mentioned this before, but they're looking to do a state of ag, hopefully in April. They're working on some site plan information. And another issue that came up that I just want to put onto the table is, like everybody else in town, there's, there's housing issues. And I think that they want to start a conversation about that.
Okay. I, I do have a liaison report, so you're going to have to indulge me. The first thing I wanted to just say, so today, I had mentioned earlier that we were all out in Montauk for the emergency dredge. And I offered some remarks during that. But there's just one section of my remarks that I just want to say here at the town board work session. And that is, I want to give a very special thank you to Councilmember David Lees. From the very beginning.
Dredge man.
From the very beginning, David has been relentless in his advocacy for this project. He has pushed, prodded, and persisted, making sure that we never lost sight of the goal. David, your dedication to this community, to Montauk, and the people who depend on these waters has been unwavering. And today was a reflection of that hard work.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
It's teamwork. And we got it, we got it done. This emergency one, and still more to come. Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Very kind of you.
Okay, I have one last thing.
Can I just say one thing? That's an appropriate and well-deserved thank you. But Kathy, you deserve credit as well. I think that the, the relationship you've built with, you know, people in government at all levels, bipartisan way, showed today. And it, it showed in results for East Hampton. Not to take anything away from the work that Dave did, but you deserve credit.
I agree.
Thank you. So I want to give an update on pending airport litigation. The town is seeking a path forward and is looking to settlement options. The town of East Hampton has made material progress in resolving pending state court litigation and identifying meaningful solutions for managing and operating the East Hampton Town Airport. These efforts aim to allow aviation interests to continue, while also affording relief to local citizens by mitigating the related traffic, noise, and environmental effects. In close collaboration with the Federal Aviation Administration, the town of East Hampton has worked for over a decade to adopt noise and access regulations that comply with the law and serve community interests. In 2022, the town sought to redesignate the airport from a public use airport to a private use airport that would be governed by reasonable use restrictions by way of a prior permission required PPR framework. This action was challenged in litigation by aviation interests. The town has rigorously defended its interest in the pending litigation while continuing complying with FAA regulations and all court orders. Most recently, the town received a court order enjoining the town from deactivating or closing the airport. While the town challenged this order on appeal and was successful in getting the order modified, the court order prohibiting the town from deactivating or closing the airport remained largely in effect. Although airport users were never prevented from using the airport, and the town's previously announced restrictions were never put in place, aviation interests moved to hold the town in contempt for failure to file the FAA Form 7480-1, which would change the designation of the airport on FAA charts from private use back to public use. Accordingly, in an abundance of caution and to avoid any future contempt proceedings, the town has filed Form 7480-1 with the FAA. The filing of this form will not change the nature of current airport operations, and will have no practical impact on the airport, because the airport has remained open to the public and fully operational throughout the entirety of the litigation. The update will be reflected in the next FAA charting cycle, which is due to be published on February 20th, 2025. The town continues to assess all available options with respect to the airport, and is exploring options for a settlement agreement to resolve the ongoing litigation in a matter that provides reasonable access for aviation users, while also providing relief to East Hampton residents. There is a status conference in the pending litigation before Justice Thomas Whalen of Suffolk Supreme Court, currently scheduled for February 27th, 2025. The town will provide additional updates as the pending litigation and settlement options evolve. So this statement was put out by the town attorney's office. The press will be receiving comment of copies of this statement shortly. And so, thank you for indulging me and letting me do a liaison report today. So now we are up to resolutions.
Thank you, yes. Resolution 2025-318, this is for warrant approvals, be it resolved that claims on warrant number 2B in the amount of $2,642,443.57 for 2024 payables, and $3,702,984.42 for 2025 payables were audited by the town board, and the supervisor is hereby direct to pay the same. And be it resolved that claims on utility warrant number 2B in the amount of $14,030.81 for 2024 payables, and $45,616.14 for 2025 payables were audited by the town board, and supervisor hereby direct to pay the same.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. It's my pleasure to offer Resolution 2025-319. This is the point seasonal snow removal drivers in the highway department for 2025. At $35 per hour, the names listed below and the retroactive dates also.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. 320 is a point lifeguards preseason training for 2025, effective March 1st, 2025. Summer. Names, positions, and pay rates below.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. Back to winner. 321, approved snowplow contractor, 2025 seasons, retroactive February 1st, 2025. The equipments and the prices either per gas or diesel listed below.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. 322 is authorized payment for title searches for the Lake Montauk Inlet Drudging Project. This amount goes to Liberty Property Services for the amount of $1,825.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. 323 is approved agreement with the Lipinski Farmscape Mowing for mowing of the CPF property located at 66 Wayne Scott Main Street, Wayne Scott, using CPF funding in an amount not to cost more than $1,850 per his proposal.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. 324 is asbestos and lead paint inspection for the Marine Museum at the rates listed below.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. 325 is authorized payment to Sentry Automated Fire Protection Incorporated for 2023 in the amount of $225.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 326, which is approved completion of SECRE and land use training, whereas the training work remains important, and the town desires the program to be completed. The SECRE training and land use programs for the town's appointed boards, planning board, zoning board, and architectural review board, planning staff, town attorneys, and town member, town board members, resolve that the town board hereby retains Daniel Rozo of the law firm Whiteman, Osterman &amp; Hanna, and Peter Faro of AKRF to complete the SECRE and land use training programs for the town's appointed boards for a flat fee of $2,500. Resolve that this presentation may be counted towards the planning board and zoning board required training.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 327 is a payout for Ryan Schilling, whereas Ryan resigned from his full-time position as planner with the planning department, effective January 17. Audited time indicates his accrued vacation time and a compensatory balance of time. Resolve that the finance office be authorized to cut a check for a gross total amount of $1,332 payable to Ryan Schilling as a final payout.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 328 is pursuant to urban renewal laws, the town board has adopted urban renewal plans governing the development of all filed maps, whereas the town engineer and planning board have now assigned the parcels listed below to specific work, whereas the listed undertaking and security have been reviewed by council to the planning board and town board. Resolve that the undertaking, together with the following security, are hereby accepted by the town. The applicant is 26 Walton Avenue. The URL parcel is map 455, block 38, lots 13 through 19, including parts of Jefferson Avenue. URL parcel 203 in SP 1-2. Tax map number 300-60-1-20.1, 26 Walton Avenue. This is the amount of $20,000.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 329 is to accept security and undertaking. This is again, the same with the urban renewal laws, and with the town engineer and planning board have assigned the parcels listed below to specific work to be accomplished, whereas the listed undertaking and security have been reviewed by council to the planning board and council to the town board. Resolve that the undertaking, together with the following security, hereby accepted by the town. The applicant is Stephen E. Allen. The parcel is map 455, block 23, lots 1 through 5 and 31 through 35. Urban renewal parcel 97 in SP 1-1. Suffolk County tax map number 300-62-4-13.1. This is at 9 Oak Claire Street in Springs for the amount of $20,000.
Second.
I just want to disclose, this is in my neighborhood. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 330 is to authorize travel reimbursement for the All Rise Drug Court. Resolve that Justice Stephen Tokolski is hereby authorized to attend the 2025 All Rise Drug Court Conference in Kissimmee, Florida, from May 28 through May 31. And Justice Tokolski shall be reimbursed for eligible travel fees, not to exceed $2,500.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. Resolution 331 to authorize ADU at 23 McElney, McElney Street in East Hampton. This authorizes the installation of an ADU at the above premises, provided the owner continues to occupy the premises as their primary principal residence, and that the installation of the ADU otherwise complies with all other applicable provisions of the recorded covenants and restrictions and all other regulations as set forth in the town code.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. Resolution 332, this is the authorized payment of POA fees at 20 Dorset in the amount of $380 for a maintenance fee invoice.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-333 is to transfer administrative assistant Sue Jones to the Buildings and Grounds Department in her current title with no change in scheduled hours or hourly rate effective March 1st.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
334 is the secret determination, the demolition of deteriorated residential dwelling. The town board has before it for consideration the demolition of a residential structure located at 403 Abraham's Path that is deemed a deteriorated building and other site cleanup activities there to maintain the property in a non-hazardous condition. Whereas there are no other uses or activities planned for the property at this time and the purpose of the work is to ensure that safety hazards are removed and public safety is maintained. And whereas the demolition of the deteriorated building and cleanup of the site to remove hazards has been determined to be a type 2 action under the regulations enacted under Chapter 128 of the town code and SECR. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town board finds that the project is classified as a type 2 action under SECR in Chapter 128 of the town code and as such, no environmental analysis of the proposed project is required.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
335 is to authorize crimes against children seminar training for the police department and this is for Detective Sarah Van Asco to attend the seminar sponsored by New York State Police at a financial impact of $2,500.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
336 is to authorize sex assault and child abuse training for the police department. This is Lieutenant Chelsea Tierney is hereby authorized to attend this course sponsored by the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services with a financial impact of $1,500.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
337 is to authorize investigative interviewing training for the police department and this is for Detective Sarah Van Asco to attend this training sponsored by the Southampton Town Police and John E. Reed and Associates and the financial impact is $630.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
338 is for 403 Abraham's Path property demolition. The bid is EH25-007. The bid is available February 20th and due back March 13th.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
339 is to amend Resolution 2025-285, pay Nimer deductible for Richard Zidjew. This is just to correct the budget account.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
340 is to revise Rezo 2025-285. It's a 2024 budget modification for the town attorney's office and it should be posted to the Fundline Insurance in the amount of $3,956.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
341 is a 2024 budget modification for the town attorney's office, removing $131 from training expense to unallocated insurance in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
342 is a license agreement for Sound Aircraft Services and this is for additional counter space at the airport terminal. It's for a three-year period at a rate of $37,500 plus annual increases in the amount to be determined by the Consumer Price Index and this is, starts for this current year.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
343 is an auction for surplus equipment and the town wishes to dispose of items for the highest offer using an online auction and we've entered into an agreement with Absolute Auctions and Realty, Inc.
Second.
Move for discussion on this. So you know, we kind of referenced this earlier, the graveyard, whatever it's called, that, you know, we've had numerous vehicles that have sat there for a year past their last auction. I'm sure there's some equipment and pieces up there that at this point perhaps need to be removed as trash more than anything else, just to help clean up town campus. I think it's on us to do that.
We'll follow up with the purchasing department.
Thank you.
So I had a second? I seconded. All in favor.
Aye.
So there are additional resolutions?
Yep, I have 334. This is to appoint Larry Lawrence Smith to the anti-bastard task force for 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
345 is his patent on resignation, Christina Schultz. Be it resolved at the finance office, here I authorize to cut a check through payroll from the appropriate budget account for $252.82 in vacation time and $41.15 in compensatory time at the hourly rate of $36,058, less $133.38 in health and dental visit contributions for gross total of $160.60. Payable Christina Schultz as a final payout.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 346, which is to amend Resolution 2022-650. And this is amending a resolution to authorize payment to Cityscape Consultants to add additional data points to the wireless communications master plan to include small wireless facilities and revise mapping.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
And I have one walk on resolution. I didn't catch a date unfortunately, but it's very time sensitive. It has to do with the ocean rescue volunteers. We need to do it for time sensitivity, so I apologize for the mistake. Resolution ID 32451, this is to adopt an amendment to Chapter 255 taxation, a local law providing for the amendment of Chapter 225 taxation of the East Hampton Town Code to add Article 9 exemption for East Hampton volunteer ocean rescue and auxiliary squad.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, so now we, do we have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into exec session for personnel, advice of council, leases, and real estate.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, LTV.